Counsel, for the purposes of confirming we have quorum, please ensure your video is turned on. This meeting is, will be convened by electronic means as authorized under the order of the Minister of Public Safety and Solicitor General of the Province of British Columbia, Emergency Program Act, Ministerial Order Number M 192. As such, council members are participating by phone. And as Chair of this meeting, I am also participating by phone. Please note, if my connection is lost during any portion of the meeting, we will recess the meeting until my connection is restored. If council loses connection during any portion of the hearing, we'll need to recess the meeting until the connection is restored. If council loses connection during the voting process, we have staff on hand to facilitate getting you back online quickly while we suspend the voting process. And the contact of information, of course, has been circulated to you. To ensure that quorum is maintained through the meeting, please let the clerk know if you leave the meeting. This meeting will continue with audio only as council are participating in the meeting by phone. Members can listen to proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which will be retweeted out by @VancityClerk on Twitter. Presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. Lastly, we have speakers who will be providing comments to council by phone, and a moderator will assist in patching the speakers through when their turn comes up. So clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair, councillor Carr.
Here.
Councillor De Genova. Councillor De Genova. Councillor Frye.
Here.
Councillor Swanson.
Here.
Councillor Hardwick.
Present.
Councillor Weeb.
Present.
Councillor Boyle.
Present.
Councillor Dominato.
Present.
Councillor Bly.
Present.
Councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Kirby Young. The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. Okay, so first we acknowledge we're on the traditional unceded territories of Musqueam, Squamish, and Sabaltooth nations, and thank for having care of this land and enjoying working together with them in partnership as we build Vancouver together. Also want to take a moment, of course, to recognize all the contributions the staff are making and how they make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. So some announcements before we begin, speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or oppose the recommendations and if they are a resident of Vancouver. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on Twitter @VancityClerk for updates on the progress of the meeting so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca. Speakers with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight 20-second delay. And to navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say the word "next" and clerks will adjust your slides. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on Wednesday, July 8th at 6:00 PM by electronic means. A reminder that council's role at public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of speakers. After hearing from speakers, council may approve in principle the application. They can also, we can also refuse the application or defer the application for further consideration. So, and just get councillors perhaps to mute, if, or just check and see if you're muted, so we don't have background noise. So we're going to start with the CD1 rezoning on Kingsway, and the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by 1076164 BC Limited Peterson Group to rezone 1111 to 1123 Kingsway from C2 Commercial District to CD1 District to permit the development of a 14-story mixed-use building with commercial uses at grade and 131 secured rental housing units, of which 20% of the residential floor area will be reserved as moderate income units. A height of 44.2 meters, 145 feet, and an FSR of 5.58 are recommended. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Thirty-six pieces of correspondence in support, 13 pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence regarding other aspects related to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:20 PM today.
Thanks so much. Let's see, so we'll start if there are speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-9183, followed by participant code 15315 hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be tweeted out and available on the live stream. And we have Chi Chan, the planner from the rezoning centre, who will present the application. And council, we do have a number of speakers, so we'll proceed with the application. Chi Chan, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just confirming that you can hear me and that you can see the presentation on your screens.
Yes, we can, both of those things.
Thank you very much. As the mayor said, my name is Chi Chan. I am a rezoning planner for this application, which proposes to rezone a site at 1111 and 1123 Kingsway under the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Programme, also known as the MIRP programme. So, the site is located in the Kensington Cedar Cottage Community Vision area at the intersection of Kingsway and Glen Drive. It is currently zoned C2 permitting mixed-use development. Sites to the east, south, and west are also zoned C2 for mixed-use development and services, while sites to the north are zoned RM1 permitting three-story multifamily development, although most are still developed as single-family houses. So, here is an aerial view of the site looking north. This trapezoidal site is approximately 1,700 square meters in size and has a frontage of about 35 meters along Kingsway and 48 meters along Glen Drive. There are one- and three-story buildings immediately around the site. So here's a photo of the current site and developed as, currently developed as a one-to-two-story vehicle repair shop. There are no residential tenants on this site. Here is the map of services and amenities near the site. There are shops and services all along Kingsway. Sunnyside Park is 300 meters to the north, while Glen Park is 400 meters to the south. In addition, there are three public schools and other parks, the Kensington branch of the public library, and bike routes, all within a 10-minute walk of the site. Staff, do note that enrollments at the local elementary schools are at capacity, and according to VSB's Long Range Facilities Plan, their framework to manage their facilities and inform capital planning, enrollment is anticipated to be steady in the coming years. The city coordinates with VSB by sharing both short-term development as well as long-term land use plans on an ongoing basis. The 19 Kingsway bus between Metrotown and Stanley Park is a TransLink frequent transit bus service and runs right in front of the development site. So after extensive public consultation, council approved the Housing Vancouver Strategy in November 2017. The strategy seeks to develop 20,000 new secured rental units, of which 4,000 are targeted at moderate-income households. In 2017, council also approved the MIRP programme, the enabling policy for these projects. Under this programme, up to 20 proposals are being considered. So this applicant is proposing to rezone the site under the MIRP programme, the intent of which is to encourage new rental units secured at rents affordable to moderate-income households earning between $30,000 and $80,000 a year. Applications under this policy must secure a minimum of 20% of the proposed residential floor area for moderate-income units. Under this programme, proposals were selected based on a number of criteria, including affordability, number of new rental units created, impact on existing renters, proximity to transit and amenities, and neighbourhood fit. Under the MIRP programme, this site could be considered for building up to 14 stories. So this application proposes to rezone the site from C2 to CD1 to permit the development of a 14-story mixed-use building with 131 secured residential units, including 20% of the floor space secured as moderate-income rental units, or approximately 24 units. An FSR of 5.58 and a height of 145 feet are recommended. As part of the Restart Smart Vancouver initiative in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute approximately 460 new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. So here is another view of the project looking northward along Glen Drive. The view, this shows the view of the building along its Kingsway frontage, with the five-story podium along Kingsway and the 14-story residential tower at the intersection. And here is a view of the proposal from the rear looking southwest. There are two-story townhouses directly on the lane, a five-story podium, the five-story podium along Kingsway set 48-foot, feet back from the lane, and the tower portion is stepped down from 14 to 5 to 1 along the rear lane interface. As noted in the council report, the original application on this site was received in July 2019 and was for a building with a six-story podium along Kingsway and a 13-story tower at the intersection. Following recommendations from the Urban Design Panel and staff review, a revised application was received in December 2019 that reduced the height of the podium and simplified the tower form, thereby providing more openness to the sky and reduced shadowing. The floor space that was carved away from the podium and tower was shifted to a new 14-story of the tower. Between the original and the revised submission, the FSR did not change. However, staff recommend an FSR of 5.58, a slight increase, but this is actually due to a technical error in the way the applicant originally calculated FSR. The applicant had not counted above-grade storage spaces for bikes and commercial areas, which staff caught in our review. The building's massing and height did not change due to this technical calculation error. So, here is a view of the elevations along Kingsway and Glen Drive of the proposed building as compared with a six-story mixed-use rental building that could be built under the site's C2 zoning. Note that on the right, the top two floors of the C2 building are shown as dotted because the amendments to the C2 zone to permit a six-story rental building are forthcoming and have been referred by council to a public hearing in July. Here is a comparison of the shadows cast by the proposed building as compared with those generated by a six-story mixed-use building that could be built, as I previously mentioned, under the site's C2 zoning. While the tower does cast a longer shadow, the project's proposed five-story podium casts a lesser shadow and provides for more openness to the sky. So changes to the DCL bylaw were approved by council on November 26, 2019. That allows projects with provide a minimum of 20% of the floor area for moderate-income households to qualify for a DCL waiver. This application, which proposes approximately 24 units with rents between $950 and $2,000, shown here in the green column, qualifies for a DCL waiver of approximately $2.5 million for the residential floor area. The commercial portion of the building will still generate a DCL of approximately $182,000. Rents for the remaining 107 market units will be based on market conditions in the area. The average rents for newer buildings on the east side are also shown in the blue columns for comparison. The household incomes required to afford these rents are also shown on this table. And for comparison, the median household income in 2016 for the, in the Kensington Cedar Cottage neighbourhood where this application is located, was approximately $70,800 in 2016. So while the rents in the market units may not be affordable to all Vancouver residents, the DCL waiver helps enable development of much-needed new secured rental housing and to test the delivery of secured vacancy-controlled below-market rental units by private for-profit developers. Based on CMHC data, ownership of a median-priced unit on the east side of Vancouver ranges from over $2,200 a month for a studio unit to nearly $5,400 for a three-bedroom unit. These ownership costs are calculated using BC assessment data and the following assumptions, including recent sales, a 10% down payment, 5% mortgage rate over a 25-year amortization period, and 150 to 250 monthly strata fee and property taxes. Therefore, both moderate and market rental rates are well below the cost of monthly, uh, cost of monthly, monthly cost of home ownership. If approved, all units will be secured through a housing agreement which would prohibit the stratification and separate sale of individual units. The agreement would also limit the rate at which rents for the moderate-income units may be increased even on a change in tenant. A pre-application open house was held in April 2019 and was attended by approximately 55 people. Following the submission of a rezoning application, the city hosted an open house, which was held on September 4th, 2019, attended by approximately 90 people. The application drawings and details were made available online following application submission, along with my contact information and a form to submit feedback. In total, we received approximately 170 pieces of feedback. So we heard a variety of comments throughout the review of this application, and comments were categorized and sorted to understand the key themes of support and concern. They're presented in the council report, but I will discuss a few of them here. We heard both comments in support and concern about the density, height, and neighbourhood fit of the proposed development. Further comments express concern about traffic, pedestrian safety, and parking. I'll illustrate the manner in which these have been addressed in the next few slides. Note that the conditions in Appendix B of the council report are intended to address the comments we've heard and reflect the revised proposal as presented this evening. So with respect to the comments about density, height, and neighbourhood fit, this proposal was selected and evaluated based on a number of criteria, including the number of new rental units created, impact on existing renters, proximity to transit and amenities, and neighbourhood context. In this case, staff felt that the site could, on balance, handle the height and density proposed, given the 100-foot-wide Kingsway right-of-way, a major arterial road. So efforts were made to mitigate the perceived impacts on the adjacent neighbourhood. It should be noted that the lots to the north are zoned RM1, and these permit three-story multifamily developments, although many of these lots are still predominantly single-family housing. So in terms of this interface, the building presents as a two-story townhouse directly on the rear lane. The five-story podiums are set back from the lane, and the 14-story tower transitions from five, 14 to 5 to 1 next to the lane. The tower's faces are also oriented at an angle so as to reduce the direct overlook onto the houses onto the north. The tower plate is small and slender at 5,500 square feet. And while it does cast a shadow on the houses to the north, the smaller floor plate is meant to create a fast-moving shadow through the day as compared with a thicker squatter building. A more substantial landscaped public amenity area has also been incorporated into the northwest corner to provide a softer buffer and greenery, as shown on the left-hand side of this slide. Two-story ground-oriented units are also incorporated along the Glen Drive interface to facilitate the residential transition. With respect to traffic, parking, and pedestrian safety, engineering conditions are included in the council report, and they include new sidewalks, street lighting, streetlights along Kingsway and Glen Drive, full pedestrian signalized crossing, and left-turn bays on Kingsway to promote smoother traffic flow, and the realignment of the Glen Drive rear lane intersection to improve sightlines. With respect to parking, the project will comply with the city's parking bylaw, including TDM measures such as paid car share memberships and transit passes for residents, convenient bicycle parking, and a bicycle maintenance facility. So in conclusion, staff support this application, subject to the conditions in Appendix B, as it is consistent with the Moderate Income Rental Housing Pilot Programme and one of the 20 selected projects for this pilot. It will contribute a total of 131 secured rental housing units, including 24 units secured at moderate-income rates, all towards achieving the city's housing goals as identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Staff therefore recommend approval of this application, and staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Just asked, is the applicant team here to speak to the application?
We are.
Great, great. And I believe you also have a presentation to show us?
That is correct. I'll bring it up on the screen here.
Great, thanks.
Okay, can everyone see my presentation and hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Great, thank you. So my name is Peter Odegaard. I'm an architect with MCN Partnership Architects in Vancouver. Just like to thank staff for a very comprehensive presentation on this building that we're extremely proud to present to you tonight. This is a product of a collaborative process between ourselves, the applicant team, city staff, and the community. I'd like to take you through a few details of the building to expand on what staff had mentioned in their, in their presentation, to explain how we got here with the building and the form of development. So I'm going to start with the ground floor on this slide, and I will, I guess I'll have to indicate or say "next" when I'm moving on to the next slide for the clerk. Is that correct?
That's right, yeah. If you say "next", we should move to the next slide. And there may be a slight delay, there might be a slight delay for the online viewers.
Okay, thank you. So with this first slide, we're going to start on the ground floor and move our way up the building. So we've started with a ground floor podium that covers the entire site, with a main feature of which will include ground floor retail to service the neighbourhood and activate the public realm. I'm going to move to the next slide. Above that, we have a five-story street wall expression that forms the mid-rise portion of the building that's oriented towards Kingsway to create a street wall that is appropriate to the width and character of Kingsway. On the right-hand side of the slide, we have some precedent examples of a similar scale expression in Vancouver. Above that, the top floor, the fifth floor of the mid-rise portion of the building is set back to soften the massing expression. And then we've got the high-rise portion of the building that is, goes up to 14 stories. I'd like to expand on some of staff's comments with respect to the massing articulation of the building. So we've oriented the high-rise portion of the building onto the corner of Kingsway and Glen for a number of reasons, mainly to give space to the residential neighbourhood to the north. I'd also like to point out the compact floor plate of approximately 5,500 square feet. I'll move to the next slide. There are a few nuanced characteristics of this floor plate and the orientation that are really important to note. The tower is rotated from the orientation of Kingsway. The reason for that is because it is oriented north-south, and so this creates the fast-moving shadow that reduces the impact onto neighbourhoods to the north. It also orients units directly to the north and directly to the east, which are indicated by the purple arrow on the screen and the number one. This is effective in avoiding overlook and being sensitive, again, to the neighbourhood to the north. I'll go to the next slide. This diagram indicates how we've terraced the massing from the ground floor podium, the five-story mid-rise expression of the building, and then the high-rise portion of the building up to the 14-story. Again, with the, the goal of minimizing the impact and the overlook onto the residential neighbourhood to the north. The last item I'll point out is, are the townhouse units along the lane. So we have a two-story townhouse expression that fronts onto the lane. This is an active use that provides a compatible additional residential use along the lane that's similar in scale and respects the existing neighbourhood to the north. I'll go to the next slide. This is the resulting building form that balance, pardon me, that balances benefits to the public realm, new rental housing, and a relationship to the existing context. Next, I'm going to move on to a series of comparative renderings. So on the left-hand side, we have our original proposal, and on the right-hand slide, side, sorry, of the next three slides, we have the revised proposal, which is the result of this iterative process through consultation with the community and feedback from staff. So we have a simplified tower form that results in a slender tower, a more slender tower that has an additional floor up to 14, and a lower street wall expression on Kingsway. This is seen again in these next slides with the simplified tower form, which reduces a portion of the building in the, above the mid-rise, which is indicated with the lower number one on the left. on the left, and then again the lower five-story mid-rise portion of the building. Then finally, the third view, this is looking north on Glen at the building, which again shows the more slender simplified tower and reduced mid-rise portion. I'm going to move to the next slide, which talks about public realm improvements. So, I'd like to point out a few of the key items on the ground floor, and then we'll move up to the amenity floor. So, the first item is we're providing generous public realm space at the corner in the form of additional setbacks from the curb, benches, bicycle racks, landscaping. The second item is approximately six thousand square feet of ground floor-oriented, sorry, street-oriented retail. This is a size that is appropriate for neighborhood retail that will service the area and will also help to activate the public realm on King's Way and Glen. We purposely oriented it to the corner and to King's Way as it felt appropriate to align the residential uses with Glen as it transitions to the residential neighborhood to the north. So, the number three indicated on this diagram shows the residential lobby. I'd like to point out that this lobby will be open and will be accessible. It will be the one singular point of entry, main point of entry, to the building for all residents of the units of the building, pardon me. So, that includes moderate income units, and market units will all use this, all use this one singular entrance. North of that, we have townhomes and public open space at the corner indicated by numbers four and five, and then the aforementioned lane-fronting townhome units, which are at the top right of the image. I'll go to the next slide. This is the sixth-floor amenity spaces. So, I'd like to point out, again, this amenity space is open to all occupants of the building. We have a generous outdoor amenity space, which includes a rich mix of uses for a variety of age groups and users. So, we have a kids' play area indicated by the number four in the top right-hand use, sorry, the top right-hand corner. Number two, we have a barbecue area. Number three, we have a social area. Number one indicates the indoor amenity space, which is approximately seven hundred square feet. I'll finish with this final slide showing rendered view in the evening, looking east down King's Way. I'd like to thank staff and council for considering this project. We're excited to present to you this building that provides urgently-needed new rental housing, job space in the form of neighborhood retail, while considering contextual fit within an existing neighborhood. Our team, including Peterson Group, is available this evening to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks so much. And just before we get to the, see if there's any questions from councillors, just want to remind the public that if they want to participate, they can call in at 1-833-353-9183, followed by participant code 15315 hashtag to get on the list, and the phone number will be tweeted out, and it's available on the live stream screen, just in case I went too fast for you. So, are there any questions at this point from council to staff? Please put yourself on the list. There we go, councillor Swanson, up to five minutes, and this would be your only opportunity to ask questions directly to the applicant, and you can ask questions to staff both now and after we hear from speakers. Go ahead, councillor Swanson.
Yeah, this is to the staff, I think. How many MERP units have been approved, or MERP buildings?
It's Annie Moblis here, senior planner for Housing Projects, and we've had seven MERP projects that have proceeded through the public hearing process.
Okay, thanks. And then, I know the MERP is supposed to be for people with a thirty to eighty thousand K, thirty to eighty thousand income a year, but this one looks like it's for thirty-eight thousand to eighty thousand. So, I'm wondering where the extra eight thousand came from. If you were paying thirty percent of your rent, at thirty thousand, it would only be seven fifty, but this unit looks like it's starting at nine fifty for the MERP units.
Hello again, it's Annie Moblis, senior planner for Housing Projects. It's the incomes that people income test into are on average between thirty and eighty thousand dollars a year, and so I'm assuming that that was how we ended up with those averaging ones for this project. I'm not sure if Sarah Robin maybe has some more detailed information specifics?
Hi there, Sarah Robin, housing planner. Yes, that's my understanding as well, that those rents that are listed for the moderate income units are a range, so, you know, some would fall below that thirty-eight level, but that that is kind of an average that is proposed for that unit, the studio unit.
So, some people who get a studio would pay nine fifty, some would pay seven fifty, some would pay twelve fifty, something like that?
Sorry, to clarify there, Sarah Robin, again, housing planner. Yes, the rent would be fixed at nine hundred and fifty dollars for all tenants of that studio unit, but the qualifying income, there'd be somewhat of a range, but there would be, you know, obviously maximum qualifying incomes there, but certainly the studio units would be set at nine fifty dollars a month.
So, if your income was thirty thousand, which MERP is supposed to serve, you'd have to pay way more than thirty percent of your income on rent, but you could still get in, maybe, if you could afford to do that?
You would be paying a somewhat larger portion of your income if you fall in that lower income of that category.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Swanson. Just, sorry, my screen is kind of closed here. There we go, councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Question to staff. Councillor Swanson said something that sparked my attention, and that was that you confirmed there were seven MERP projects that have proceeded to public hearing thus far, correct?
This is Chi, the rezoning planner. Thank you for that question. I would like to confirm that there are seven projects which have been approved by council to date, with a total of seven hundred and twenty-eight rental units.
And could you also confirm how many of these projects would be considered in a pilot as opposed to a complete policy?
So, all of them, all of these MERP projects are pilot projects. They are part of the twenty that are allowed within the pilot.
Oh, so, thank you very much. The answer to the question is twenty is the magic number that we're looking to reach, correct?
For this pilot, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, councillor Hardwick. I don't see any other questions from council, so we'll go to hear from the public. And just a reminder again, 1-833-353-9183, followed by participant code 15315 hashtag to get on the list, and we're going to move to speakers. Clerk, can I think, we're just getting, just getting people queued up to come in? I have a list here of people. I think first on the list, we have Kelly Hager. And I'll just wait for things to get queued up, council.
Kelly Hager's line is open.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Kelly Hager. I've called into the public hearing to say a few words in support of Peterson's proposal in building homes for the missing middle class and new retail King's Way on Glen. In particular, I'm quite fond of the twenty percent below-market rental for the development as well. My husband and I live in King's Way and Fraser for the past six years. We're very passionate about the urban issues and impact on the city that we call home. We live within walking distance from Peterson's site, just off of Windsor, and are excited about the positive changes that the project could bring to the neighborhood. We've really enjoyed seeing the Fraserhood mature and grow into the community that it is today, as the corridor's grown into a vibrant, much safer community in the recent years. We quite frequently visit our favorite faux-boise, but follow Le Mans, Discover Dogs, as well as the new addition on the block, as we call it, bells and whistles. I'm excited to see what else can come this way. The Fraserhood and King's Way corridor is home to many independent small businesses, and I want to see this vibrant culinary scene and boutique shops thrive. I'm very excited about this development, and over the past ten years, I can see that we've seen it succeed. For these businesses to continue to thrive and grow, I believe it's important to support residential densification and housing for the missing middle, who will form a consistent customer base to support these businesses, as well as the employee base for the moderate-income housing included. This is of particular importance during this time of economic recovery. I know quite a few of my friends that, you know, are nurses or teachers, and they cannot no longer afford to live in the city, so I think development of this nature is needed more than ever. Council, I hope that you will support this application, which I will keep our community vibrant and adding much-needed and more versatile housing options, as well as new retail to the neighborhood. Thank you for my opportunity to share my opinion.
Thank you very much, and you don't have any questions from councillors, so just thank you for participating tonight, and we'll move on to our second speaker, who is...
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. Costa Tagunas. Put my glasses on here. Costa Tagunas. Did I get it right?
Hello?
Hi there.
Pretty close. Costa Tagunas, hello? Good evening, mayor, steward, and council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Everything good? Good evening, mayor, steward, and council. My name is Costa Tagunas. I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I am in favor of the rezoning application. As an owner of commercial property on King's Way and Knight and King's Way and Fraser, I would like to express my full support for Peterson's proposal to rezone the property at King's Way and Glen, to allow for the development of a fourteen-story rental building with ground-level retail. With residential vacancy rates in Vancouver somewhere around one percent, it's clear that there is a demand for more rental housing across our city. Without projects like this one being built, I'm concerned that our city will feel the effects of this current housing crisis for many years to come. I also think that, I also think that this proposal represents a much better use than the vacant low-rise commercial buildings that exist on the site today. Here, we have an opportunity to build new market and below-market rental homes in a desirable location near restaurants, shops, green space, and schools, all within walking distance. If you choose to support this project tonight, I truly think this building will be a welcome addition to the neighborhood that will contribute to the continued positive transformation of this area into a vibrant residential and commercial hub. Thank you for listening to my comments, and I hope council will support this application tonight. Thanks.
Thank you very much, and I don't see any questions for you from council, so I'll just thank you for participating this evening, and I'll move on to the next speaker. We have Michael Buckin. Michael, are you there?
I am. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for, thanks for taking my call.
At my, thank you, you have up to five minutes.
My name is Michael Buckin. I appreciate the opportunity to address council tonight, and I'd like to offer my support for Peterson's rezoning proposal for their property at King's Way and Glen. I support the objectives of the Moderate Income Rental Housing Program and applaud the city for developing a new policy to help make Vancouver a more livable and inclusive place to live. As a father of young children in the area, I do have concerns about the high cost of housing in Vancouver, and I want to make sure I can play my part in helping making our city more affordable and livable for generations to come. As a result, I am keen to support projects like this one, which will deliver affordable alternative to homeownership and ultimately offer more housing options to those who need it. I've lived in East Vancouver now with my young family for five years, and I hope that my children will continue to live there for many years as adults, which is one of the reasons why I'm supporting this project. Great new restaurants and shops continuing to emerge in the Kingsway corridor. I think there will be high demand for new homes proposed in this project. Thank you for taking my comments, and I hope you will vote in favor of this application.
Thank you, thank you for participating. I'm just checking our, I don't see any questions for you, so just thank you for calling in this evening. And I'll move to our next speaker. Checks with the clerks. Do we have Ronald Lau? Ronald Lau is there. Your line is open, and you can go ahead.
Hi, mayor, stewards, members of council, and planning staff. My name is Ronald Lau, and I've been in the Eastside residence since 2002. I want to call in and share my brief vote of support for this rental housing project at 1111 Kingsway. In my opinion, this project offers many benefits to our community. New secure rental homes, a range of affordable levels, no tenant displacement, and of course, a high-quality design for our neighborhood. I was really encouraged to see that the project has a range of apartment layout that has a range of affordable rental options. I think that these two aspects will really help create an inclusive and more culinary onsite community, which is an important consideration to an urban setting. I'd like to end by saying that I think the commercial space that's proposed for the ground level is also a really good idea. I think the combination of commercial and residential works really well and really helps to activate the street and give more life to the area. Thank you for your consideration this evening. I appreciate you listening to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and I don't see, I don't see speakers or councillors with a question for you, so I'll move on to Elise Spearing. Elise Spearing, your line is open. You can go ahead.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thanks. And could you let us know if you are a resident of Vancouver? That's our new council requirement, and then you have up to five minutes to speak.
Great, hi, yes, I am a resident of Vancouver. Hello, mayor, steward, and council members. My name is Elise Spearing. As a long-term East Van resident, I'd like to share my support for Peterson's rezoning application. I live on King's Way in the Mount Pleasant area, not far from their site, so I understand and appreciate the amenities that come with living in a great mixed-use neighborhood. Over the past few years, I've experienced firsthand of projects like this. Bringing lots of new people to an underdeveloped area can bring new businesses and public realm improvements that strengthen the neighborhood. Since moving into my current apartment on King's Way in 2017, after living only a few blocks away since 2014, I've seen Mount Pleasant change dramatically for the better since two new towers were completed right next to my building, including a rental one hundred project. A bunch of restaurants and a new grocery store moved in, a great fitness studio opened up, sidewalks and bike lanes were upgraded, intersections on King's Way were all significantly approved, Mobi stations were added, and that's all within one city block of my building in the past two years since those projects were done. So, it's in my opinion that this project, including the new neighbors and small businesses that will come with it, are very good news for this neighborhood. Secured rental opportunities are very scarce in East Van, affordable rentals even more limited. While I'm one of the lucky with secure housing, people need to recognize that there are many families at all income levels who are struggling to stay in this community. Many of my own peers, at what seems to be an accelerating rate, are choosing to leave Vancouver for other major cities across Canada solely due to the high cost and limited availability of quality housing here. And to be honest, selfishly, I'm speaking today because I'm tired of it, and I believe Vancouver desperately needs to approve more projects like this to stop losing residents who would otherwise be huge assets to this city. I think it's great the staff have developed this program to encourage more affordable rental, and I think it's great that developers are actually pursuing new projects under this policy. And over time, I think policies like this will make Vancouver a more affordable and inclusive place to live. Thank you for the opportunity to address council this evening, and I'm confident the city will recognize the need for a greater level of diversity in our housing, and I hope this awesome project will be able to proceed. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. You do have a question from councillor Hardwick. Councillor Hardwick, please go ahead. You might be on mute, councillor Hardwick?
Thank you, sorry about that. Ms. Spearing, do you work in the property development industry?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I think that's it for questions, so thank you very much for calling in this evening, and I'm going to move on to the next speaker. We have Carrie Buntain. If you'd just let us know if you live in the city.
Hi there.
I can hear you. Go ahead, up to five minutes. Whoop, I did have you.
This is city moderator, Carrie is on the line.
Great.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thanks. Please go ahead.
Good evening, mayor, steward, members of council. My name is Carrie Buntain, and I'm a nearby resident just off Fraser Street and King's Way. I'd like to voice my support for this proposal to build new rental housing along the King's Way corridor. Since moving to East Vancouver three years ago, I've witnessed many positive changes in our neighborhood as a result of new, well-thought-out development. The area has benefited from new restaurants and stores opening their doors here, and more families, including myself, my brother, and my sister, moving in, all looking to set down solid roots in this community. I really, I really appreciate this as a great place to live, and I'd love for more people to also have the opportunity to live here, because it's really a special community. Specifically, I'm fully supportive of this particular site at King's Way and Glen being redeveloped. I think the proposal will make much better use... I think the proposal will make much better use of this site by both having commercial and residential, including this very important affordable component. Um, as city staff mentioned earlier, this proposal would see the introduction of a hundred and thirty-one secured rental homes, including twenty-four moderate income rental homes for households earning averages between thirty and eighty thousand per year. This is fantastic, a fantastic opportunity and would be a huge benefit to many people in our city. This is a project that will add much-needed affordable housing, along with the market rental in the Kingsway corridor and is close to shopping and great restaurants, they're all within walking distance from me, so it makes a lot of sense. Development projects like this will provide better access to affordable housing and support job creation, which we desperately need right now and is very important on our COVID recovery for the months and years ahead. I'm pleased to see that city planning staff and all council members have continued to make progress with advancing the city's housing goals and I've closely watched some of the other MRR programs and I continue to, I'll continue to watch them as, as hopefully we can get more down the line. I hope this project will be supported by mayor, council and the entire community based on the benefit it stands to deliver for all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and I don't see, uh, anybody on the queue for questions, so thanks, uh, thanks for calling in this evening. Uh, I'm going to go to speaker number seven, who's, uh, Powell, um, Sidlowski? Pavel Sidlowski?
You can go ahead, Paul, your line is open.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thanks, please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and council, my name is Pavel Sidlowski, I'm a renter, a first responder and I have been a local resident within the Groundview Woodlands community all my life. After seeing that a public hearing date was confirmed on your city website for the one-one-one-one, one-one-two-three Kingsway Street project, I decided I wanted to speak to you today to share my support because I feel very strongly about advocating for this kind of housing in our community. As a long-time East Vancouver resident, I am happy to see these moderate income rental projects being proposed in the neighbourhood. This pilot program is a great opportunity to increase the rental housing stock in the area, while also offering below-market rental options. These kinds of projects will absolutely help to keep young working professionals like myself in Vancouver for the long term. It would also create great opportunities for single-parent households. In my job, I meet a lot of different people in varying situations. Unfortunately, many people are being pushed out of the city in search of more affordable housing. Finding secure rental housing in a great neighbourhood and a rental rate affordable to one's income has the potential to really make a positive impact on someone's life. I think something as simple as the moderate income pilot program can do that. Another benefit of this project is it is very desirable location. With its multiple bus routes, it'll be an ideal location for transit users and commuters who frequent to Vancouver's west side or downtown core. I really hope to see this project approved tonight, I think it would be a great addition to the neighbourhood. I think this is a great opportunity for our community to flourish even more. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you so much, uh, there are no councillors to, uh, to ask you questions, so I just want to thank you for participating this evening and, uh, and I hope you do so again sometime. Uh, we're going to move on to the next speaker, uh, Abraham Chung.
Hi there, this is Abraham, hi there, this is Abraham Chung, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, please go ahead.
Okay, hi there, I'm Abraham Chung, uh, I'm a resident of Vancouver. In fact, I was born and raised and lived in East Van all my life. Um, I am a engineer and I remember kind of as a young professional getting out of school, being able to, uh, rent a place of my own downtown in Yelltown and, you know, it, it's just amazing that, uh, I see some of the new other young engineers coming through my workplace, not being able to do the same, uh, necessarily find a place of the same quality or even in the same neighbourhood and, uh, you know, they're kind of relegated to renting some older buildings or in less desirable basement suites. That's why I support this pro- uh, project and believe that a building like this is exactly what we need in Vancouver with both secure market rental-only development, as well as, uh, the moderate income initiative, which is a huge, uh, benefit in what the city needs in terms of livability and, uh, to address the housing problem, which I have seen firsthand, uh, growing up in Vancouver here. Uh, as a long-time East Van resident, being born and raised, I remember when this corridor was less than desirable and quite, in fact, uh, a little bit sketchy at night and seeing the development happen over the years, uh, namely at Kingsway and Main Street and also up at Kingsway and Knight, uh, having positive effects in the neighbourhood and of course, leading to a lot of, um, interesting restaurants, uh, wonderful selection of small shops, you know, everyone's talking about the bells and whistles, Sally de Maing, Matt's Stick Coffee. Um, it's just become a very vibrant neighbourhood and this is the right location for a project like this, which is going to address both market, the lack of market rental and a lack of moderate income level, uh, rental housing. So therefore, in conclusion, I do very much support this project. Uh, it addresses both rental stock in general, uh, moderate income rental stock and in terms of the area for development, this is a great area to develop such a, uh, project. It's right in between two existing developments at Kingsway and Main Street and also Kingsway and Knight. And therefore, I am voicing my support. Thank you very much for the time.
Thanks very much for calling in, appreciate it, and, uh, you don't have any questions from council, so we'll, uh, move on to the next speaker. I've got, um, uh, Shaughnessy Luke. Miss, and, uh-
Hi.
Go ahead, Shaughnessy.
Hello, Mayor Stewart and council members.
Please go ahead and maybe let us know if you, yeah, we can hear you and please let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver and then you have up to five minutes.
Thank you. Yes, I'm a resident of Vancouver. Hello, Mayor Stewart and council members, thank you for the opportunity to address council this evening. My name is Shaughnessy Luke, um, and I'd like to offer some brief comments in support of this application tonight. As a long-term renter and also someone who works in tenant relocation, I appreciate the need for greater access to secured rental housing and can attest to the strong demand for this type of housing in the Kingsway, Fraserhead, Mount Pleasant neighbourhood. In order to maintain and promote the continued diversity of Vancouver, it's critical that we have the adequate housing supply that supports our growing population and allows us to at least sustain our economy, if not help support its growth. Not only is this project adding vital rental housing, it's providing affordable housing for households earning between thirty to eighty thousand dollars annually. This income bracket captures a lot of people in Vancouver's population. This could include the teachers at Charles Dickens Elementary or the baristas at Pallet Roasters Coffee. These are people who support our community and unfortunately, a significant portion of people who deliver vital services in Vancouver are forced to endure lengthy daily commute due to the lack of decent affordable housing options within the city. I'd also like to mention that I'm really impressed with how quickly the city of Vancouver developed a new process for, uh, virtual public hearings in response to the pandemic. This really demonstrates your commitment to address the housing shortage. As a new mom who continues to work full-time, it's really challenging to come up to City Hall and I hope that you'll continue with these options for virtual participation when the social distancing protocols have relaxed. I hope that mayor and council will support this great project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much for calling in and we don't have, uh, any questions for you, so I'll move on to the next speaker. Uh, speaker number ten is, uh, I have Craig Patterson, it might be Craig, uh, Patterson. If you're on the line, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of council. I've lived in this neighbourhood for twenty-seven years, I've lived in the east end for forty-three. Uh, I'm in favour of lower income housing, uh, the problem with this proposal is it doesn't provide enough, there's not enough low-income housing, uh, in, in this neighbourhood. Uh, and that's clear to everybody and anybody who lives here. Uh, the people that walk up and down the streets now are with baby carriages, the most expensive kinds of berry, baby carriages, uh, with dogs, the most expensive kinds of dogs and with casual clothing and their ten thousand dollar bicycles. So let's not be under any illusions. There's also, uh, prostitution on Kingsway at night, there's drug dealing on Kingsway at night, there are weapons in the area. This isn't humpty dumpty. Now, the problem I have with the development is that it's, as I say, not enough for the poor and I suggest intent, uh, that there should be at least five to ten units for native people. We don't have enough native people living in the area, they can't afford to and this is their land. They should be living here. I haven't heard a word about indigenous people in all of the yakking so far. I don't know who the Peterson Group is, I don't know what their record is, some people are a lot better than others. I'm encouraging you to go for art, history and culture. Make sure the cladding is expensive cladding, not junk, we have too many junk cladding buildings going up. Kingsway already is one of the worst monstrosities in North America. It's ugly, everybody knows it, it's ugly. We need some more beauty, we don't need cheap metal and cheap plastic. We need good materials, particularly wood. This used to be, history speaking, the most thickest, uh, rainforest in the world, this spot we're talking about. Douglas fir were the tallest and the biggest round in the world. Let's have some Douglas fir, some cedar, some spruce, some hemlock on the facade, in the interior, wherever you can put it. Also some art, let's have some native art on this project site. Outside and inside. Making the owner, for example, put local artist's art up every six months, rotate it. That will be a way to help support local artists. So those are my thoughts, thank you for doing the work that you're doing, I look forward to the results.
Thank you so much, sir, and, uh, for phoning in tonight, you don't have any questions from, uh, councillors, uh, so I just wanted to say-
Not a single question?
Uh, not to, uh, not tonight apparently, but you said it all.
About art, history and culture, not a la- not a single question.
I'm sorry, you know, so we'll, uh, we're going to move on to the next speaker, I just wanted to say thank you so much for calling in.
Thank you.
We have, uh, thank you, uh, speaker number eleven is Brennan Finley.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, uh, members of council, my name is Brennan, I live at two oh ninety-seventh avenue. Um, I'm calling today to voice my support for this rezoning application. Um, I've been renting in this neighbourhood for about five years now and I've moved maybe three times. I can confidently say that finding rental units in this neighbourhood is among some of the more stressful things I've had to do. Um, every time you go to the listing, there's lineups of people interested in the same unit, it becomes a bit of a competition and that's obviously because, um, you know, nearby this site, it's very desirable, there's a lot of families and young people that are living in the area. Um, I think this project, which is being proposed under the moderate income rental housing pilot program, uh, is a great example of an application that's really meeting the policy staff and council put forward in an effort to increase market and affordable rental housing in the neighbourhood. It's clearly needed, um, the city's expecting two hundred thousand jobs by twenty fifty-one, there's a vacancy rate under one percent and I think only around twelve hundred market rental units have been approved in the city between twenty ten and twenty eighteen. So I don't think we're doing enough to meet that future demand, um, or to help bring down affordability. Um, I see Kingsway and Glen as a great location for more density, being located at the intersection of two major arterial roads. Um, and I think this project could really be a catalyst to help revi- revitalise the area, um, as most of the buildings are two to three stories with a lot of at-grade parking. Uh, this type of form and density doesn't really create a vibrant public realm or encourage sustainable modes of transportation like cycling and walking. Um, it really promotes the car and I think we can do better than what's existing. Um, so again, I just want to reiterate my support for this project, hope council can see past some of the surface level issues of height and density, think more about the long-term benefits to meeting the housing needs of current and future residents. Um, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, uh, for calling in, I don't see any questions from councillors, so we'll, uh, move on to the next speaker, thank you, uh, Brennan and we're moving on to Zachary Hyde next.
Zachary, your line is open, you may speak.
Hello?
Hello, oh, we can hear you.
We can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, hello, mayors, uh, council members and city staff. My name is Zach Hyde, I'm an assistant professor of human geography, planning and city studies at the University of Toronto, where I study urban development and housing. I've also been a lifelong resident of Vancouver. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak today regarding the rezoning of one-one-one-one Kingsway. I'm speaking today in opposition to this development, which, if approved, will introduce roughly one hundred units of high-end rental housing into a working-class and immigrant neighbourhood through the MRR program and have a negative impact on affordability. I wrote a piece in the TAI several months ago about this rezoning and my concerns about the impacts it could have on Little Saigon and the broader Kingsway corridor. I know that some of the members of council read the article, which is based on research that I've been doing over the past number of years in Vancouver and Toronto. Based on the findings from my research, as well as the findings of others, I'm concerned about this project for a number of reasons. If this project is approved, we can expect a number of things to occur in the neighbourhood over the next few years, which will make it less affordable for renters and business owners. This development is already correlated with a large amount of real estate speculation in the neighbourhood, which has led to the loss of longstanding businesses that serve the community. With rising commercial rents, existing and new business owners providing affordable services will find it difficult to afford to operate. This will give way to higher-end antique restaurants and stores, something which we have already been seeing happening in the neighbourhood. Also, by introducing a large amount of rental housing targeted to those making over eighty thousand dollars a year, research indicates it is likely to have a negative impact on other residential rents in the neighbourhood, making them less affordable. This is something which we saw with the Woodward's development in the downtown east side during the two thousands. In addition, I'm concerned about the lack of community planning and vision for this historic immigrant neighbourhood. Allowing large speculative spot rezonings is antithetical to the city's promise to work to protect neighbourhoods like Little Saigon from speculation in Vancouver's housing market. When Mayor Kennedy Stewart was elected, he promised to bring density to the city, which is a position I agree with. However, he suggested that much of this density needs to take place throughout the city, including the west side. Instead, what we are seeing mostly with the MRR program is large, high-end rental projects in historically working-class areas of the city in East Vancouver. Based on my research, I believe that instead of large, high-end rental towers, we need to focus on gentle density and low-to-mid-rise development, missing middle housing in neighbourhoods such as Little Saigon. I'm advocating for a project that fits within the four-to-six story existing zoning, instead of approving an exemption of twice that height at fourteen stories, which makes this a high-rise tower. The small number of middle-income rentals and amenities attached to this project cannot compensate for the amount of high-end housing being built and the negative effects this will likely have on affordability in the neighbourhood. I spoke with councillor Frye in person about this project and he stated that he had read my article in the TAI. He seemed to agree that speculation is a problem in Little Saigon and is also concerned about the loss of affordability in this neighbourhood. Alongside councillor Frye, I hope that other city councillors who are elected by Vancouverite in order to create progressive solutions to the housing crisis, will vote against this project and other projects like this, and consider alternatives to spot zoning to preserve Vancouver's affordable neighbourhoods. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me.
Thanks very much, and you've got a, uh, question from councillor Hardwick.
Well, thank you very much for being here and, uh, for injecting, uh, a different perspective into, uh, the prevailing narrative. Um, you've, you've commented really on the gentrification impact and the fact that we're focused, as we are designed to, on the twenty percent, uh, affordable housing and not the eighty percent that is by definition above and beyond that scope. Um, have you done any research, have you, have you looked at the data, have you got any reporting that you could share?
Well, yeah, I see this, the MRR program is kind of, um, in a long tradition of, of, um, types of development that have been going back to the Division Administration, really the Woodward's project, um, in the early two thousands and we've seen these types of projects where CACs or Rental One Hundred or STIR are justified on the basis of providing relatively marginal amounts of community benefits for very large amounts of density. And I think the overall finding, one of which is published in peer-reviewed journals, is that when you introduce this amount of density, the small amount of, um, affordability is provided through these units is not able to compensate for it. Along with the fact that these units aren't truly affordable, I think there's mention that this would be affordable for baristas working at Pallet, I don't think baristas working at Pallet are making forty thousand dollars a year in Vancouver, this is very middle-income rentals, so I think saying that it's affordable is misleading in and of itself, um, in terms of the MRR units.
Are you familiar with, uh, the, the pro formas and the, and the trade-offs between MRR and, and how that would be affected? What I'm getting at here is the fact that the city- What I'm getting at here is the fact that the city forgos, uh, community amenity contributions in exchange, basically, for underwriting these affordable rental units?
Yeah, I've, I've heard that as well. I mean, I think, again, I'm, just personally speaking, right now, um, rental, rental housing is one of the most lucrative sectors of the financial industry in Canada right now. Uh, developers are doing extremely well. I think there's a narrative that it's very difficult to build rentals, and the city needs to give all sorts of, of benefits to developers in order to get them to build rentals. But if you look at the stock market, um, rental housing is one of the hottest stocks right now. So I think this idea that, that, um, the city should be giving even more benefits in order to produce rentals is, just doesn't align with, with the facts of what's going on in the Canadian economy at the moment.
Speaking of the Canadian economy, um, the, uh, the housing market is, is, uh, you know, significantly driven by immigration. Do you have concerns about the COVID crisis and its impact uh, on the rental markets and in housing in general?
We should actually just keep the questions of the specific project, uh, councillors.
Well, this is illustrative of this, this project.
It takes me, I might have some thoughts on that, but it takes me in a slightly different direction, so.
Okay. Okay, but your general message is that, um, we're looking at the twenty percent, not the eighty percent, and the overall impact of gentrification on the neighborhood?
Yeah, you know, I, I use that word in the piece I wrote for the TAIE. I tried to avoid it because I know it can be a little bit divisive, but, um, that's essentially what I'm saying. I think there'll be significant impact of gentrification on this neighborhood because of this project, and it will significantly, um, harm the affordability and character of Little Saigon. And I think, um, the fact that it's also a historic immigrant neighborhood adds another layer that I haven't here spoken about at all by the city staff, um, which, um, I think is important personally.
Thank you very much for your insight.
Thanks. You have, uh, questions from councillor Swanson as well. Go ahead, councillor Swanson.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you mentioned, um, Woodwards as an example of gentrification. Can you explain what happened with Woodwards?
I, I feel like explaining Woodwards to, to you, councillor Swanson, is a little, uh, it's a little difficult because I know that you also have very, um, a very deep knowledge of that project, but, um, I, I see the parallels in, in the fact that a large amount, um, of density was introduced into the neighborhood in exchange for social housing and, um, and some forms of amenities. And there's actually two phases to Woodwards. One, which was smaller, and then a second one, which was approved in exchange for, uh, I think a daycare center essentially. And the extra amount of condo units that were approved for that project weren't able to compensate for the amount of displacement that happened in the SRO hotels in the neighborhood. So there's kind of been a net loss of housing, even though there was housing built through, sorry, on units, there was, or sorry, through social housing units. Um, overall, more housing was lost than was, than was gained in the neighborhood. So that's my understanding, but feel free to add anything if you'd like.
Never ask a question unless you know the answer. Thank you.
Right.
Thanks. We, uh, question from councillor Carr as well?
Yes, uh, thanks so much. Really appreciate, uh, your, uh, your coming to speak to council and your input. Um, I'm curious in terms of your study of, of gentrification and, uh, these processes. If, you know, how do you, um, how do you think we can achieve greater affordability? Uh, you know, I was on council when we made the decision to move forward with the MRRP program, and it was the first time that we were requiring that at least some portion of units were rent geared to income. And, and albeit it's not a large amount, it was the first time that actually got embedded into a housing program. So how do you suggest, in your study of the, the whole housing sector and gentrification, how do you suggest we, um, increase the numbers of rent geared to income at local incomes in order to, um, stop the kind of gentrification process you're talking about?
Yeah, so it's such an extremely complicated question. I, I would like to acknowledge the fact that the councillors, of course, are in a difficult position with the housing market in Vancouver being what it is and the fact that the, the federal government stopped really funding, um, affordable housing in the early nineteen nineties. So cities have tried to take on, um, this responsibility for building affordable housing, but it's kind of created this paradox where through creating small amounts of affordable housing, it's had a, a negative adverse effects, led against the Woodwards example. So it's a question of whether the community would be better off. I see the MRRP program. I, I don't think this is affordable housing, um, in the first place, but I also think that allowing for fourteen stories of, of luxury rentals in a working-class neighborhood in order to justify, um, just twenty percent of middle-income rentals is just, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to be accomplishing the, the goal of, of making the city affordable for lower-income people, which I think is something that, that, that people really elected this council to do, um, after seeing kind of these types of projects being approved a lot over the past ten years and having kind of negative impacts in terms of gentrification. Um, so in terms of what I expect, yeah, look what I, I think. I just, I don't know if there, there's a way that you could compensate fully for the federal government, um, providing full funding for affordable housing, but I don't, I know that this is gonna have, the negative impacts from this are gonna outweigh the positive impacts. That's at least my position, based on the research and findings, yeah.
So prior to the MRRP program, what we were seeing at council were development applications, which were just a hundred percent rental, but they were all at market rate. Or the alternative was they were condos. So do you think those are preferable?
Um, well, it depends. Like, if this was across the street, I think that, I think the city council could be asked to, for, for a building of this size to provide affordable, like, you know, middle-income rentals, twenty percent, and it could be, you know, six stories and not fourteen. Um, you get a couple extra, extra stories, but I just think that this kind of Skyslow mentality or you have to really give these huge amounts. And again, it goes back to this, um, assumption that the development industry is suffering and, um, and developers don't want to build rentals when, like, real estate investment trusts are the hottest, um, stocks on the market right now because people can't afford to buy houses. So I, I just, I, I think that this eighty-twenty thing, it's, it's just, it's, I think it's a recipe for, for gentrification, essentially. Um, and it, I don't think it is necessarily better than a four-story project that's all just market rentals. Like, I actually think that a, a four-story, all-market rental project would probably be better for affordability in the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, uh, councillor Frye. Up to five minutes.
You, you know, I think councillor Carr really kind of answered where I would have, or asked where I would have gone with this question. Um, you know, I mean, I, I do, I do remember the, uh, the interview, by the way, and I, I, um, and it's, it is a complicated space. I mean, I also recognize that, given what's already happening along that stretch of Kingsway, um, even in just the retail fabric, um, there is a degree of gentrification that will happen regardless of what we zone or don't zone or rezone. And so I'm wondering if, I think you've ma- you've made it pretty clear that you don't consider this a lesser of any evils by virtue of the fact that it, it does have some, uh, affordable units that are, most importantly to me, that are, actually have vacancy control, because I think that's the one real appealing factor of, of the MRRP. And, and do you see any benefit to the fact that there's vacancy control in amongst the market rental?
Well, I mean, I think that the vacancy control is attached to the average rents in the city due to the polarization of incomes in cities like Vancouver and Toronto, where you see a lot of people who can barely make it and people who are doing extremely well. Um, then I think the, the fact that there's vacancy control, but it's not actually, um, attached to people's incomes, it's only attached to the median income, then that basically doesn't really provide affordability at all. I think you'd need a program that, that is thirty percent of people's incomes, like rent geared to income, which would be truly progressive, because this is just not really a progressive, um, housing plan, the MRRP plan, in terms of if you're speaking from like a left-wing housing perspective, you'd need rent geared to income, I think, for it to even be in that conversation.
Sure, but re- recognizing then that the, the, the city doesn't really have the resources to build that level of housing, uh, and we have to work with sort of what we have at our, at our option and, um, you know, see where we can get assistance from other orders of government, senior levels of government. You, you don't find this is better than it could be worse, kind of things?
Um, no, no, I think there's about ten years of historical precedence to go on and data and evidence um, from the downtown east side, for example, of like the harm that these projects can have on lower-income communities. I just see that, that these low-income growers and, and communities, they, they won't be able to survive if there's massive gentrification in this neighborhood. Um, it's gonna really change the neighborhood a lot, I think, to be honest and frank. So, yeah, based on the evidence that I've seen and what I expect or predict to happen in this neighborhood, if this is approved, I don't think it's a lesser of two evils, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Frye, and that's it for questions. We're, uh, gonna move on to the next speaker. Thanks for calling in today and sharing your thoughts.
Thank you.
We have, uh, Kelly Talaco.
Kelly Talaco.
Talaco. Just before I move on, I just want to remind, uh, folks, if you want to call in and, uh, have your say on this building, you can call one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three, followed by participant code one five three one five hashtag. Uh, go ahead, Talaco, Mr. Talaco, I'm not sure.
Good, uh, good evening, Mayor and council.
Ms.
I am Kelly Talaco. I've lived in Vancouver for over forty years, within five blocks of this Kingsway site. I'm speaking tonight in opposition on the grounds that the city has not adequately communicated with residents. I'm not talking about the legal requirements or standard procedures. I'm talking about clear, open communications that are in cor- in accord with the reality of the development approval process, and I will explain. I believe that in the past five years, only two proposals that have reached the public hearing stage have been turned down. One oh five Kiefer Street by the previous council and four five seven five Granville by this council. In that time, how many public hearings have been held and how many heartfelt, heartbreaking stories have been told? Consider the patterns. Neighboring residents have objected to proposals because of height, because they don't have the feel of the neighborhood, because the building is overwhelming, because yards will be shaded, because views will be lost, because privacy will be invaded, because parking and transit will be problems, and so on. They've come to tell you that the proposal doesn't fit their community plan because of its scope, or because they thought the plan protected their heritage street, or they feel tricked that an approved four-to-five-story building now has extra height on its roof, or that their East Van neighborhood has had more than its share of development. They've brought petitions with hundreds of names. They've objected that the city has driven a poor bargain, receiving only a small number of units for low-income tenants versus many more units for higher income. None of this has mattered, and in exchange for their efforts and sincerity, neighbors have often been trashed as selfish homeowners who only want to keep the status quo. Their longtime neighborhoods have been described as boring and in need of revitalization, and they themselves have been lectured on neighborliness. I recall the recent Larch Street hearing in which the words of Dr. Martin Luther King were used to scold and shame civic-minded speakers, to trivialize their concerns and to obliquely hold them responsible for years of societal injustices. I have come to see these public hearings as often toxic environments. In my view, the city has contributed to this toxicity by failing to clearly communicate just how urgently council is addressing Vancouver's housing crisis. The pandemic has shown us the kind of reality-based communications that are essential in a crisis, and these are: clear communication of the facts and supporting data; brief, simple explanations of issues and terminology; regular and frequent progress reports from respected authorities; easy access to essential information at the public's fingertips. Applied to the housing crisis, we need, among other things, one, a prominent bullet on the city's homepage, highlighting the crisis and linking to a dashboard of essential information, as is done now, recovid. Two, accurate figures on population projections, housing targets at all levels, and progress made in each category. Three, the familiar fact sheet explaining, for example, that East Vancouver will always bear the brunt of development because its land is cheaper than on the west side. Four, corrected versions of plans such as MRRP, clarifying that criteria such as building form and neighborhood fit are decided by professional planners, not by residents, just as it is professional planners who interpret the clauses of neighborhood plans and vision statements. Five, corrected terminology. The MRRP program is not a pilot project in the sense of a pilot on electronic scooters, which, if it doesn't work, can be discontinued in short order. The MRRP developments, in contrast, change neighborhoods forever. It would better reflect reality to call these Phase One prototypes rather than pilots. In summary, the reality is that if you are to meet your targets, you must approve every development that the planners have determined meet the necessary criteria. And how can one deny that the number and type of developments will create radically different neighborhoods and a different city overall? Vancouver citizens need to realize this. The city must repeatedly proclaim the urgency of our housing crisis and the seriousness with which city council is acting to address it. Explicit factual information would let residents know that nothing that comes to your neighborhood should surprise you. And you should expect massive change, both now as we address housing issues and in the near future as the city plan unfolds. This reality has not been sufficiently communicated to Vancouver residents, and I therefore register my objection to the proposed project.
Thanks very much, uh, and you have a question from councillor Hardwick.
Wow. Um, I hear you, generally, but we have to focus on this. We have to focus on this particular project. Uh, you started your statement with the fact that you, you felt that the neighborhood was not fully aware of this, and then you ended it with the city, uh, the residents of the city broadly are, are unaware of, of the implications of, of MRRP as illustrative of a, a larger philosophy towards promoting development in the city. Um, are you familiar with this site in particular?
I'm sorry, with, with the what? With this site?
This location, this site.
Oh, I am indeed. A long-time, uh, very well-regarded, uh, auto repair shop operated for years at that site and repaired our car as well.
So one of the, the, um, advantages that will be cited is that it's not, uh, displacing any existing residential rental or otherwise. Um, do you have any concerns about, I mean, we've heard about this, the height and the, the scaling. Is your concern about the physical change or about gentrification, as we heard from the last speaker?
If I need to put an objection into one of the common categories, it would be in regard to the, the issue of trade-offs, the very small, uh, number of, uh, uh, lower-income tenants who will be there versus market rental, which will change irrevocably. I am deeply concerned, however, about the broader community, the broader issues, the issues of terminology that lead to the sense of citizens feeling betrayed because they're not getting the, the full picture. We, this is a crisis. We, we, uh, people say that almost casually. We're in a housing crisis. We have seen from the pandemic that when there is a capital C crisis observed in the city, it goes front page on the, uh, on the website. It goes all over town. There's no doubt there, there would be very few people in the city who did not realize that there is a pandemic crisis. So we have a housing crisis, and councillor Swanson will add, we have an opioid crisis. Why do we not have links to dashboards, periodic, frequent progress reports on the city, via the city's website and communication that get us all in the loop and inform us where we are, how much we have to do?
Um, the, the list and, uh, could you share your script with us, uh, with council? You, you listed off a number of things. I, I, for one, would be grateful to have that, and if you could share it with the rest of council, I'm sure they would too.
Yes, I would be glad to. Thank you very much for listening, councillor.
Thank you. Bye.
Thanks so much for your time. I'm miss checking here, and, um, that's it for questions from councils. I just wanted to thank you very much for, for calling in.
Thank you.
And sharing your thoughts. Thank you. Um, we've got, uh, Karim Windsor.
Your line is open, Karim, and you can go ahead.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead and let us know if you're a, a resident in Vancouver. Yep, thanks.
Yeah, of course. Uh, my name's Karim Windsor. I'm a resident of eight two six East Twenty Third in Vancouver, which is about five or six blocks from the project. Uh, my kids go to Charles Dickens Main School and the Annex, which is about a block from, a couple blocks each side of Kingsway, north and south. Um, I know the- I know the site really well, walk by it all the time with the kids. I understand it's a C2 zone site, so typically what would be built there would be four-story condos, like you see kind of running up and down Kingsway. I think getting a fourteen-story rental building instead of four-story condos is definitely the way to go, because I think we need more, we need more density where we can put it, and I think we need more rental. Also, I think in terms of like the housing continuum, you know, there's a lot of single-family, there's some lower-income rental, there's condos. There really isn't a lot of rental housing along Fraser, Kingsway, Knight, and I think this adds to the continuum and adds a more diverse housing stock. So, I think it's a good idea, building it where it is. You know, I think we've got a serious problem with the economy with covid and everything that's going on with the unemployment, and I think having more projects like this and more density and more construction is good for locals to create jobs and work, and I think we need to have more projects like this. I've been listening to the last few speakers about how it may impact the neighborhood and affordability. I don't know if I agree, because I think, one, stands auto, you know, you're not displacing, you're not displacing any low-income housing right there. You're creating more rental housing. Hopefully, the city of Vancouver will build their rental one at Kingsway and Windsor, and we'll see more diversity. So, I don't necessarily think there's going to be much, any displacement going on. Really, the area between Fraser and Knight is, and especially where this is at, I think it's, what's it, Clark or Glen, it's kind of a, it's like a, it's a bit of a no-man's zone. There really is nothing going on, and if you walk the area, if you walk the neighborhood at nighttime, there really is nothing along Knight to, not Knight, along Kingsway to stop at or grab a coffee, or, other than maybe like some corner stores. It's pretty quiet in that location, so I think having some density and having some amenities and retail there will kind of put some eyes on the streets and create a bit more, a little bit of life in the neighborhood. Let's start to wrap up here, but I think, just from listening to the conversation, I think, I think councillor, mayor and councillor, what you're doing is great. I think what I'm seeing is you're allowing greater density and more rental along the corridors, and I think the more rental and the more housing you can build along corridors like this, I think may not solve the housing crisis, but I think it will help mitigate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks very much for calling in. Thank you, and I don't see any questions for you, so just appreciate you participating, and I hope you call in again sometime. We have, next, speaker number sixteen is Anne Stewart Hunter.
Hello?
Hi there.
Hello?
This is Anne.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hi.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Anne Stewart Hunter, and I'm a longtime resident of Kensington Cedar Cottage Community, having grown up and lived in this community all my life. I'm speaking on behalf of my husband and me in opposition to this proposed fourteen-story development for the following reasons. The project is too tall, lacking a height transition and unduly shadowing single-family homes. It doesn't provide enough parking spots for the number of apartments. It is a high-end rental tower being proposed on a weak promise of affordability. It will accelerate the fragmentation of Little Saigon. So firstly, the project is too tall for how close it is to residential homes. The height transition is too sharp. Height transitions are important in planning other neighborhoods of Vancouver and should be for this community too. We submitted a letter to council with examples of other approved projects in Vancouver. The examples we provided to you included Marple, Granville Woodland, Norquay, and West End projects. They are in Appendix A with our letter submission. Whereas these plans aim to scale up the size of buildings gradually, the proposed project is fourteen stories and separated from homes by only an alley. Comparable projects along Kingsway have a height transition. King Edward Village at Kingsway Knight has a tower, but being on the south side of the street, there are six lanes of traffic, two sidewalks, a meridian, and the full length of commercial property between the tower and the nearest residence that could be in its shadow, north and west. South and east, the tower is buffered by shorter heights before leveling off. The developers submitted a neighborhood context plan that identifies several other developments along Kingsway. All the tall buildings with towers, they were over seven stories, in this plan are located on the south side of Kingsway and therefore not significantly shadowing any residential home, whereas this development is located on the north side of Kingsway, with only an alley separating it from single-family homes. The shadow cast on single-family homes has no precedence among developments on Kingsway in this community. According to the shadow study, the few homes will be partially shadowed every day of the year from September to March, the corner house completely shadowed daily. In Appendix A, page five, which you can see among the community response documents near the bottom, the Granville Woodland plan only permits industrial buildings to be adjacent to developments with that sharp a height differential. Whereas other neighborhoods have community plans that prevent towers from being built so close to family homes, Little Saigon and the wider Kensington Cedar Cottage neighborhood do not have a community plan. Secondly, this proposal provides forty-four spot, parking spots for one hundred and thirty-one rental units. This is not sufficient. We currently have a lack of street parking as it is. The eleven-hundred block of East Nineteenth Avenue has been regularly filled up with parked cars from existing residents and commercial activity. Where will the residents and their visitors of this tower park? Thirdly, when large towers start taking over heritage and ethnic communities such as this one, the local businesses that reflect the character of the neighborhood are driven out. Little Saigon's Vietnamese restaurants and bakeries are unlikely to persist if towers like this are built. Finally, this is a high-end rental tower being proposed on a weak promise of affordability. Twenty percent of the units are dedicated for people earning thirty thousand to eighty thousand per year, and the rest will be high-end rentals. That means only twenty-six units that are affordable, since the building provides one hundred and thirty-one units overall. I question how this meets the criteria for housing affordability and hence the zoning allowance of a tower. We believe there needs to be more housing, but new housing should be thoughtful of existing homes and neighborhoods and preserve the communities they are built in. Other neighborhoods have community plans. Kensington Cedar Cottage does not. Other towers have height transitions, this does not. All the other examples of towers over seven stories along Kingsway are on the south side of the street, mitigating impact on single-family homes. This one is not. Finally, this will accelerate the fragmentation of Little Saigon. This is a beautiful community. So far, city council has recognized and respected the diversity of the people of this community and has attempted to maintain the character of the neighborhood, providing new developments but keeping most developments seven stories or less. I've spoken with several neighbors on our block who have all agreed that this building is too high and does not reflect the character of our neighborhood nor the needs of the community. What can city council do to change ad hoc tower construction in this community? We hope you sympathize with our concerns and oppose this application and move forward with a more appropriate development for this site. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thanks very much. And you've got a question from councillor Hardwick. Go ahead, councillor Hardwick.
Okay, hi, I'm going to put you on speaker, is that okay?
Sure.
Sure, if it still works.
Okay, thank you.
One of the themes that you touched on was balance. We're balancing the need to enable density and to enable affordable housing, but your interpretation is that this particular project or the MERP program or policy in general is not in balance?
Yes, this is true. This particular project is mistaken. I think people see it as, there is like, from what I can hear from the people that have been in support of the project, they're really looking for something that's going to be affordable for renters. This particular project is not affordable for renters. It only offers twenty percent of the rental units, and those people that will be able to rent those units have to earn between thirty and eighty thousand dollars. I mean, that's not even like a moderate income in and of itself. So, I don't see it actually meeting the criteria for the purpose, and I mean, I know the developer has used that as a purpose to bring this tower, to create a tower of such a high story, with so many stories. It just seems inappropriate for the height and for the neighbors.
Going back to the subject of balance again, we're trying to balance the desire to create density and to enable affordable housing, but what you're arguing, I believe, is that we need to balance that with the history and integrity of the community.
Correct.
And so, you feel that that is not being balanced either?
I, yes. It does.
Sorry, I'm putting words in your mouth, but I'm really trying to really encapsulate what you're trying to tell us.
Yes, it does not. It is, yes, you do need to balance it with local history and with the neighborhood. This neighborhood has a lot of character, the neighborhood has been, I mean, if you look in the neighborhood, there aren't, most of the buildings aren't above like seven stories on this side. You can still offer affordable housing to people, and we totally think that there is a need for that, but it doesn't need to be in an ad hoc tower type of construction. And this particular site doesn't look like it's really planned out with that in mind and with thinking about the community. It's the part, it's part of Little Saigon, and I'm concerned that Little Saigon is going to become fragmented throughout this whole process. All of our lovely little coffee shops that we do have that are existing, the restaurants that do provide reasonable, you know, like, they're like local businesses that have been opened up along Kingsway, I'm always seeing signs of things closing down. I mean, this is just the beginning, and I think it's very dangerous when we start putting up high towers just anywhere, just because we feel we need to desperately add in types of housing affordability opportunities, and yet they aren't really offering that when we look at this particular site. We need local and affordable amenities, we need to keep the, this character of this neighborhood alive, and I think that we're going to destroy it when we start adding in lots of towers and just anywhere where we feel that is. I also don't feel that this is a major artery either. We have Kingsway, but Glen Drive is not a major artery. It's a small street, so it's really not an appropriate place to put a tower like this.
Okay, but you have to acknowledge that there has to be increased density and that we have to find places to put people as we grow. So, I don't think, you're not arguing that there should be no change?
Of course, but this is unprecedented in this area.
Okay, that's good for me. Thank you very much.
Thanks. You have another question from councillor Boyle.
Sure.
Thanks. I just wanted to follow up to hear if you have particular suggestions about how we should be creating more affordable housing than this?
I would like to see six to seven-story buildings along Kingsway, much like what's already in existence, much like what Zach Hyde had suggested earlier in his presentation to council. These types of buildings, which doesn't significantly change the character of the area or drastically change what the future of the area.
And just to follow up on that, if the market won't create affordable units at just six stories, would you support higher taxes so that we create that affordability publicly?
I mean, nobody likes higher taxes, but I mean, I think if we have to, we would have to, right? So, yeah, I guess so.
Okay, thanks. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And that's, I think that's it for questions. Oh, mayor, I'm right here on the list. Oh, I'm sorry. And I'm just going to remind councillors, you know, we're going to try to stick to the merits of the project and not, not you specifically, councillor Frye, but just keep it in general mind. Go ahead. Thanks, mayor.
And I just wanted to, thanks, Ms. Stewart Hunter, I just wanted to follow up on your comment around, you're seeing lots of businesses sort of going out of business and how this will affect those businesses that are going out of business negatively. I'm trying to make the connection there.
Well, I think when you introduce a high-end rental tower, such as the one that's being recommended for this site, rentals, the other places, the other businesses that are locally in the vicinity are also going to be affected by that type of a tower that's being placed there, rents goes up for them, and they end up having to pay a lot higher rent for themselves. This can drive out smaller businesses. So, I'm seeing, yeah, being replaced, I'm seeing some businesses being replaced, or you can see the boards going up and they're saying that they're now being moved, they're selling out. I see a lot of those smaller businesses being hurt by this, and I think it's because the rent will go up, they won't be able to afford to stay here. That's going to affect our Little Saigon. We have an area that has cultural diversity to it. It's supposed to be part of the fabric of this neighborhood, and I can see that that's going to be eventually lost.
Okay, so I guess where I'm trying to make the connection then, is it possible that maybe adding more people would help support some of those businesses that are otherwise not able to sustain?
Well, some are being replaced by pricier places for different clientele, so I don't know necessarily that it would help those businesses. Those businesses could still be driven out.
Okay, okay. I guess, and the last point is, I mean, this is an auto body shop, and I know that there's quite a number of those kind of businesses in the vicinity, obviously with, you know, VCC nearby, and they've got their auto body stuff there as well, and it's, I see that kind of street use changing throughout the city. Are you seeing that as well, that auto body shops aren't commanding the same sort of commercial attention that they used to?
Yes, it's changing. Yes, it's changing. I mean, for sure, the auto body shops are starting to disappear. I have noticed that. I mean, I've lived here all my life and grew up here. I was here, World Force Dance Transmission was even there. So, I do, I've seen a lot of changes in this neighborhood, and yes, I do see that those types of shops are disappearing.
Okay. And I guess, so lastly, you'd be preferring to see a four-story condo on that site, given that it's likely not going to be an auto body shop?
Absolutely, because I mean, that would fit in with what is already existing. It is also part of the vision that I think was part of the plan when, there were hundreds and hundreds of residents that were involved in planning this area, and that was a few years ago, that was, I think, in the late nineteen nineties, like nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, and I still remember all of that. And there was so much effort put into making this area, maintain this heritage, maintain the smaller building, so that we weren't going to become a concrete jungle, we weren't going to alter this area and the heritage, all of the cultural diversity and the way, the actual heritage of this entire and character of this neighborhood. So much effort was put into it, so many people involved in that, and it seems like that's not even considered right now with this, this type of thing. And so, I really hope that you will look at that, and will look at the history of the area, look at the neighborhood, and really consider, what is this neighborhood going to be like if we add in towers like this? How does this affect us in the long run? Because I think the big picture here isn't being looked at very carefully. Well, I'm hoping you will look at it carefully. Thank you.
Lastly, just on a closing, I mean, let's assume that maybe if this does go ahead and gets approved, there's some direction in here around the street frontage and the retail. Do you think that that addresses some of the kind of concerns around granularity and maintaining the kind of quirky characteristics? I know there's been some thought that was put into that, and the UDP is recommending some work on that.
I do think it's good that there are going to be some retail and some things being offered at the ground level. It's much better than nothing, that's for sure.
I think the key is granularity and not big-box kind of approach.
Right. Yeah, no, that would be great if it was not like, yeah, that would be great. But again, my biggest concern is that this is an unprecedented development, it's on the north side of the street, which really impacts the residents, right, on the north side, and that's another piece that I think needs to actually be looked at.
Okay, I'm afraid I'm going to have to cut your time, that's five minutes, but thank you very much, and there's no more questions from councillors. So, again, thanks very much for sharing your thoughts, and I hope you call back in again.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I hope you'll consider these thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council, we're, let's see here, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my list, and we have Scott de Langboom.
Hello, mayor, councillor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Okay. Thank you, mayor, councillor, for the opportunity to speak today in support of these moderate-income homes. I'm a renter in East Vancouver and well-aware of how difficult it is to try and find a place to live, particularly one that's affordable and good condition, and we have a rental vacancy rate that's just far too low. It's around one percent, it just is not enough. It's not enough that housing just be out there, it needs to be available, people need to be able to rent it, and that isn't happening right now, and that's driving up prices, and this project helps go a little ways too. up prices, and this project helps go a little ways to improving that situation. It's one small step in the right direction. And more importantly, it means bringing more neighbors into the neighborhood, and that's, means a better neighborhood. That means more customers frequenting the neighborhood stores, more patrons in the restaurants, more people you interact with, which these days doesn't always seem like a good idea, but when you're, we're at the end of this, it's going to be great. It means more social interaction, it means friends that live close and not out in the valley because that's where they could find an affordable home. It means tighter social networks, better communities, and all of that adds to the neighborhood and to the city overall. Welcoming new neighbors is a positive sum change for the community. Everyone benefits. Change is something that's inherent in all cities, but there's just no way we can stop it. What we can do is help guide it in a positive direction, which this proposal does. And on that theme, I'd like to suggest a couple ways that this project could be even better. It's going to be around for the next fifty, eighty years, and this is really a question of not just what Vancouver next year is going to look like, but where is Vancouver going to be in two thousand eighty or twenty-one hundred? And having twenty percent of a large building available for moderate income housing throughout the entire period is going to be a huge boost to the community. But let's actually make it even bigger. Let's, rather than going for twenty percent of this project's, uh, five point three nine FSR or twenty thousand six hundred fifty-eight square feet, let's aim even bigger. Let's aim for more than thirty thousand square feet of moderate income housing by bumping up the FSR from its current five point three nine to something closer to eight. Additionally, this project would be improved if it was located away from a major polluted arterial road such as Kingsway. Living on these major roads is unpleasant, both in terms of air quality as well as noise, and I think it's rather inappropriate that the city locates all of its moderate income rental housing onto the most polluted parts of our city. A couple blocks further north of here would be an even better location for it, and I know you can't actually change it on this application, but something that's going forward particularly as, uh, the citywide plan develops. However, despite that one particular concern, this project's overwhelmingly beneficial to the city and the neighborhood, and I ask you all to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Um, just looking here, I don't see any questions for you, sir, so I really appreciate you phoning in this evening and taking part in this hearing.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to move, move on to our last registered speaker, who is Connor Stewart-Hunter.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Mr. Hunter, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Great. Um, so, I'm a resident of Kensington Peter Cottage. I've lived here my whole life, in the same house I was raised in, and I'm speaking to oppose this proposal. I've so far heard a lot of other folks at this meeting and in writing voice support for more rental housing, and I, I agree, we need more rental housing. But when adjudicating any particular housing project, it's not sufficient to ask whether it increases supply to the city as a whole. You have to ensure that the building's impact on residents are fair and proportionate with the impacts happening in other parts of the city. It's great that the city is engaging the public in a citywide plan to increase housing stock and housing affordability, and, uh, I really like that there are community plans for, uh, Grandview Woodland and that, that design growth carefully for culturally historic places like Commercial Street. Unfortunately, the short strip from Kingsway, uh, along Kingsway from Knight Street to Fraser, um, the city council gave the name Little Sagan, isn't being treated in the same way with the same level of preservation. This proposed fourteen-story tower is emblematic of a blind spot that exists for Little Sagan. The Marpole, Grandview, Woodland, and Western Community Plan, and the Kensington Peter Cottage Plan back from the nineteen nineties, all insist that new developments conform to a smooth height transition. For example, Grandview Woodland for Commercial Street allows, uh, single-family homes to be adjacent to six-story buildings. Uh, the proposed fourteen-story tower has an incredibly sharp transition. There's only an alleyway between the tower and two-story homes. As Zach Hyde mentioned earlier in his comments, uh, new towers under the MERC policy are primarily in East Vancouver, and so they're not fairly distributed throughout the city. Um, what it looks like to me is that other neighborhoods are being preserved while Little Sagan and Kensington Peter Cottage broadly are not. Uh, the Kensington Peter Cottage community, when it was given an opportunity in the nineties, chose specifically to preserve a low-rise strip that is Little Sagan from Fraser to Knight Street. So this project is not consistent with the expressed preferences of Kensington Peter Cottage last time it made its plan, but is it consistent internally with what's going on in the last ten years within Kingsway area itself? So the developer points out that there are other large developments that have been built at major arterial intersections along Kingsway. This fourteen-story tower, however, is not at an arterial intersection such as Fraser and Kingsway or Knight and Kingsway, but it's on Glen Drive, which is a sleepy street that isn't continuous north-south for more than a few blocks. Every other tower project is also on the south side of Kingsway, I think mentioned by one of the previous speakers, meaning that it does not have a shadow primarily on residences, but mostly just on lanes of traffic and commercial buildings. Other tower projects also conform to height transitions. At Sophia Street, the building levels off toward residential properties across the street, and, uh, there's built more on the other side, so, uh, that's pretty much the same height. At Kingsway and Knight, the tower is centered at the intersection, and so when the building, uh, continues toward the south towards residential properties, it levels off, um, to a smaller six-story, seven-story building. So this particular, particular project isn't consistent with the pattern of culturally historic street development in other neighborhoods, nor is it consistent with other tower constructions along Kingsway. But for the sake of argument, even if this building were on the south side of the street, so it didn't shadow homes particularly, and it conformed to a height transition, would it even help affordability? We should be asking who these homes will be affordable to and at what cost. The building going up is, uh, to, only going to provide about twenty-six units of below-market rate housing, but the apparent definition of below-market rate housing includes individuals who could earn up to eighty thousand dollars a year, which is above the average annual income of a resident in Vancouver, Kingsway. Uh, the other one hundred and five units, the overwhelming majority of the units will be market rate. I think we can all agree that the current market rates in Vancouver are really expensive, and so the majority of the impact of this project is going to be shifting amenities away from key businesses in the neighborhood, such as the inexpensive bakeries, the Vietnamese sub-shops, the grocers, to signs of gentrification like larger chains and more expensive outlets. Um, the city council should consider this project inside the context of an immigrant community that is currently still affording lower-income amenities. Many families and renters that currently reside in the neighborhood may not be able to afford to live here much longer, making way for more affluent residents. Furthermore, approval of this building would set a precedent for Little Sagan as well as other neighborhoods. This would be the tallest building in the historic strip of Kingsway, that is, Little Sagan section, by a huge margin, and will be used to justify further large-scale towers. Those future ones may not be designed with any below-market rate rental at all. The construction of affordable housing is really important to the city. I support it a lot, uh, but this particular project jeopardizes in, uh, like a low-income, friendly, uh, immigrant neighborhood, and it is unusually imposing on residents.
Thank you so much, uh, for your comments. Um, I'm just checking the list here, and I, oh, Counsel Hardwick, you, uh, have a question? Up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Thank you. A very persuasive argument. Um, the, the questions, uh, that continue to come up around this, again, pay no attention to the eighty percent market, just pay attention to the twenty percent non-market. Uh, look at the construction jobs that it's creating, not the impact that it will have in disrupting the neighborhood. Um, as you know, what we're faced with are a series of, of cha- of, uh, you know, a balancing act, really, trying to, to weigh out whether this is worth it, and the argument is being made to us that this is worth it, um, for the advancement of the, the neighborhood. And so fundamentally, you would challenge that premise.
Uh, yeah, that's correct. I get the feeling that, uh, the MERC policy in this particular case is smuggling in a lot of much, uh, wealthier, uh, luxury rentals with the promise that some of them, a very small minority, are going to, uh, improve the community. But yeah, I just don't think that's how the process worked. I think that, as you heard from an expert earlier, like, research has suggested that the last ten years of this kind of development is really not causing the neighborhood to become more affordable.
Um, one of the earlier speakers commented on a rental shortage. One of the things I've been observing is with the collapse of our tourism and Airbnb and, and the foreign students, that there's a lot more rental availability in the market. Um, do you, do you see a need to, uh, go through any kind of reevaluation before approving these kinds of projects?
Um, yeah, that might be a good idea, though, uh, I, I mean, like, I, I've heard, I, I'm not able to do anything objective, but I've heard a lot about how in the wake of sort of the collapse in Airbnbs, uh, in Vancouver, that prices are starting to shift downwards for rent as well, which is really positive if that's actually what's going on. Um, so it might be prudent to try and think on that, what is causing that fact, and if there's a way that Vancouver can, uh, benefit from the fact that it clearly has a lot more units available that just are being used, um, well, as Airbnbs.
Uh, okay, that, thank you very much for, I really enjoyed and appreciated your presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Thank you, and that's, thanks, and that's, uh, it for questions from council. I just wanted to appreciate, say we appreciate you, uh, calling in this evening and sharing your views. Um, Council, that is, uh, was the last registered speaker. Um, I am going to call, uh, my first of three calls then, for, uh, folks who might want to speak to this item, uh, one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three, uh, participant code one five three one five hashtag. Um, and I'll just check with the, uh, with the moderator if there is anybody on the line, uh, that would like to speak.
There is. Sorry, the first caller is Yosh Kasahara. You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Just let us know if you're a resident-
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hi, just let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver, and then you have up to five minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Yosh Kasahara, and I am a resident of East Vancouver, as well as a business owner in East Vancouver, and I'm calling to express my full support for Peterson's project. My company is locally owned, we're located in Mount Pleasant, and we provide flexible office space for small businesses. We employ over thirty people, and most of our staff also reside in the city of Vancouver. One of the things I hear constantly from our employees is that they struggle to find suitable, affordable housing in the city. In fact, last year, we lost two of our staff members because they were starting families, and each of them decided that they needed to move to the Fraser Valley for affordability reasons, because it just couldn't make sense along commute. I believe that this situation is not unique to us. Many Vancouver-based companies, just like ours, are experiencing the same squeeze. I'm listening to some of the objections, uh, to this project, and I'm hearing some people question exactly who this, uh, who this project, both its affordable components as well as market components are targeted to. And I did some math, and based on the incomes of employees in my company alone, I can tell you that the, there are a number of real people who would benefit from the range of housing provided by this development. Regarding the objections to height and density, I think that this building is quite modest relative to other high-density developments in the area. The existing low-rise buildings simply do not deliver enough rental units to even make a dent in addressing the housing shortage that we have in the city. My only complaint with this project is that it's not tall enough. We need more rental projects like this, and we need them as fast as possible. Thank you for considering my position. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Uh, we don't have any questions from council, so we'll just, uh, thank you for calling in, and I'll go back to the moderator and see if we have another caller.
Yes, the next caller is Rebecca Chaster. You may go ahead.
Hi, um, my name is Rebecca Chaster. I am thirty-three years old. I've been a renter in Vancouver for fifteen of those years and ten of those fifteen in East Vancouver. I'm also an urban planner, so I completed my masters at UBC, and I've worked at the cities of Surrey and Coquitlam since then as an urban planner. Um, I've spent many years volunteering at the city of Vancouver. I was on the Vancouver City Planning Commission out of school, and I've spent five years as the youngest member on the advisory panel to the Development Permit Board, the city of Vancouver, and it's only my second iteration ever calling in, uh, in a public hearing or being in person, so calling in, of course. Um, so I'm just going to briefly speak in favor. Um, I, as I said, as a, as an urban planner, I don't often speak up in favor of, of applications, but I really think that this, in this case, like, you can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. You have an opportunity, I think, here to approve a project that does provide a mix of rental and affordable housing, replaces, um, it's not taking away any existing rental stock on site, and, and I really believe as a planner that we often get hung up on, um, how perfect the project can be, what exactly those rents are going to rent, and yes, like, the, the performers prove out that some of the rents that get approved that are going to be market may not be exactly what someone like myself, which as an urban planner at a city, we are in the pocket of the eighty K maximum that these units would rent for, that those might, you know, some of the rents in this building may not be affordable to people like me and my colleagues, but they will be the rents that are more affordable in, in years in the future, and you are getting that twenty percent. So, um, I just want to speak in favor. Again, like I said, it's, it's a project that, that is, has a lot going for it, provides a lot more stock, is on, um, on transit, and would provide more housing for people who need it, like myself and other, um, other people who still rent in this city even in our mid-thirties. So thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. And, uh, just check here, I don't see any, uh, I don't see any questions for you, but I want to say thank you so much. Um, I'm going to make a second call for, for, uh, speakers, and the number to call in is one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three, followed by participant code one five three one five hashtag, and I'll go back to the moderator to see if there's, uh, anybody else on the line.
There is no one else on the line at the moment.
Okay. Thank you so much. So I'll read this one more time. If there are any other speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free, one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three, followed by participant code one five three one five hashtag to get on the list before we close it. Uh, the number is also on Twitter and, uh, available on the live stream, so, um, I guess I'll go back to the moderator one more time, and perhaps the clerks after that, just to see if there's anybody else, uh, to speak to this item.
There is no one else at the moment.
Thanks, and I'll go to the clerks. Is there anybody in person there?
Mayor Stewart, this is the clerk. We have no in-person speakers.
Okay, thanks so much. So, uh, since, uh, few or no public comments were received after five PM today, there are no speakers present at the hearing wishing to submit additional public comment or writing. Um, let's see, uh, so I'm going to move on to hearing closing comments, asking further questions to staff, and, uh, for us to make a decision. So, uh, so closing a list now, uh, and the speaker's list is now closed for this item. Does the applicant have any closing comments?
We do not have any further comments. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Staff have any closing comments?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no further comments. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, so council, you have question, uh, uh, opportunity to ask questions to staff now, if you want to put yourself on the list. Don't see anybody on the list. Okay, so council, uh, we'll make our decision on the application. Do we have a mover for the recommendation?
So move, Counsel Digenova.
Thank you, Counsel Digenova. Do we have a seconder?
Counsel Boyle.
Thank you, Counsel Boyle. Um, so if you'd like to say anything, debate this, with the motion now been moved, please put yourself on the list. Counsel Swanson, please go ahead, up to five minutes. Counsel Swanson? Maybe you're on mute.
Um...
There you go, I can hear you now.
Okay. Um, yeah, I just want to make a few points about this. One is, we shouldn't be saying that it's for people in the thirty to eighty, that the MERC program is for people in the thirty to eighty K range. If it's thirty-eight to eighty, I think that's what we should be saying. The second is, as a couple of the speakers said, this project will have a gentrifying impact. Forty stories of probably luxury rentals, since it's fourteen stories high, the top floors are going to get a premium price. They're going to have a huge impact on the surrounding community, on Little Sagan, on the land values, on the rents for businesses and the rents for residences. Um, there's also the problem of yet another MERC on an arterial with virtually nothing done to protect residents from the pollutants from traffic. And then there is, of course, the question that was discussed about what's the alternative? How are we going to get more affordable housing? Um, and I just think we have to abandon the market as the source of affordable housing because it won't come from the market, and we have to start just pushing really, really hard to the senior governments, either for the money that we need for housing or for the ability to raise the money ourselves with a progressive property tax, like a mansion tax. tax. Um, so, yeah, thank the speakers who came, and, um, I, I don't think I can vote for this one. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Hardwick?
I've been wrestling-
It's, uh, Counselor DeGenova, if you could add me the queue, thanks.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Hardwick.
Yeah, I've been wrestling with, uh, whether to, to abstain or, or oppose this particular development. Um, on the plus side, I was impressed, uh, by the design. I like the design, I appreciate the revisions to the design, um, and from a, an architectural and planning perspective, I think the applicant has done a good job, uh, based on, on their objectives. The problem is that, um, I, uh, I'm not aligned with the objectives, and this all goes back to, it, all of these, uh, programs are, are being justified because they align, uh, with the goals of the Housing Vancouver Strategy, and I, uh, have been pretty clear in my criticism of that program, and, and, uh, I'm looking forward to receiving some up-to-date data so that we can start some renewed analysis and recalibration of our housing plans going forward. Um, this will have the effect that has been described. It will gentrify the neighborhood. It's, to me, I still, you know, the notion that we're saying that twenty percent is, was worth, um, this project, um, I, to me, that just does not compute on the merits of the policy and, and on, uh, the, the business structure or paradigm that it creates. And I fear that continuing to, to foster these kinds of projects is just going to further, uh, increase the, the affordability problem that is persistent. So, um, again, I, I compliment the applicant on, on the design and, and on their, their responsiveness through revisions, but I think it's ultimately misguided, um, and my larger criticism of the MRRP program, which, uh, I hope that we will have a further discussion on in the future. Uh, I could go on, uh, thanks to the speakers, I thought, uh, there was one, or two that I thought were particularly insightful, uh, and I hope that they're listening, that they will follow up and, uh, contribute some of their ideas in writing. All of this does beg the question about what we're going to do to provide, uh, housing throughout the city that is affordable going forward, and I can think of no better time than a pandemic for us to be exploring what that looks like going forward. And one thing we do know is it's not going to be like it was in twenty sixteen, or in even, uh, the first part of twenty twenty. So, um, again, thanks, uh, to the speakers, I, um, and again, my compliments to, to the proponent, the, for the design work and the revisions. Thank you.
Counselor Carr, up to five minutes.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, so first of all, let me just thank staff, uh, for the work on, on this and the applicant, um, and, uh, the fact that there was a, you know, there were significant revisions to this, uh, this project, based on the feedback from the Urban Design Panel, um, and, and I'm sure staff, so, uh, I very much appreciate the, um, reduction in the snowing effects, um, et cetera, to the building. Um, really thank the speakers, too, for taking the time to, to speak with us, that's, um, that is what public hearings are about. I totally agree with my colleagues on council that we need to find housing solutions that deliver much more affordability. Um, we do not, we, we have not solved the affordability crisis in this city by a long shot, and we do need to find other ways to achieve that affordability. I really believe the solutions are in, um, in the kinds of projects that we see coming forward that we know are more affordable. They're done by nonprofits, uh, uh, housing providers, um, they're on the city lands, um, uh, you know, and, and we could be pursuing the city itself, um, developing or building that housing, as they do in some other municipalities, uh, but we don't have, uh, a lot of that happening. Most of our housing deli, is delivered by the market. Um, so until we had this program, the moderate income rental housing pilot project, um, I was looking at proposals at councils that were primarily either develop, developer-driven condo development projects, um, in large areas of the city, or market rental. And market rental, everybody agreed, was not affordable to the, um, income levels of people who typically rent in this, in this city, uh, which is under fifty thousand dollars, uh, a household income. That's, that's the, you know, the sort of average, and it certainly goes down, um, to, uh, and it's harder to achieve affordability for those below that, that level. Um, so is this MRRP program ideal? Uh, it's not ideal. Is it better than what, what we had? I think it is. I mean, people talked about, you know, only having market rental. Well, these, this building is only market rental, but it's not just all market rate, it's at least twenty percent, um, at rent gear to income. Um, as I say, that's not ideal, but it is better, and I am going to support this project.
Thank you. Counselor Carr, we're, uh, on to Counselor DeGenova.
Thanks very much. Um, I mean, I agree with my colleagues that we definitely need to, affordability, that was the reason that I ran, uh, for office, and, and, you know, to represent younger people who weren't involved, so that there would be an opportunity for people to live here. And for twenty percent of those units, I consider the, the fact that there'll be twenty percent of people who otherwise wouldn't be able to live in market units. So I think we, you know, at, at the same time, we have to try and deepen affordability, but that's where we have to look at the policy and the model. This being public hearing, it's a quasi-judicial body, looking at the policy report, hearing, uh, the thoughtful comments from our staff, seeing that, that there's been many iterations to, uh, the, to amendments that have been made, not only with the design, but that our staff have worked through this, and it meets a number of our housing policy, to the point that was just made regarding, you know, pollution. I think about how pollution affects people who have to commute into Vancouver also, because they can't afford to live in our city. So twenty percent, is it good enough? No, it's not, but it's certainly better than no, than no housing that has a deeper affordability than market, and, you know, to, to those of my colleagues who, who think that we need to get there, let's roll up our sleeves at council and look at the policy. And I know our staff are working on that with different types of housing. That being said, I think it's important that we don't, you know, that we do integrate housing of different, uh, and allow people of different incomes, different options, and integrate them. I don't think that one building should necessarily be luxury, and another building should be ghettoized. Uh, that's a model that I think that, you know, has, has, that should be in the pasture in the city of Vancouver, and that's why I do support this project, and I was happy to move the motion. Uh, that being said, I think we have to strive to, to do, uh, as best we can for affordability. Do I wish it was higher than twenty percent? Yes, I do, but do I think we're going to get there at this point in time? No, I don't, and I see us actually, um, then looking at some of the projects we've had in the past, that holding this back is dollars and cents, and that's actually going to hurt affordability for people in our city. So for that reason, I will be supporting this project, but I do hear the speakers, I do thank each and, each and every one of them, in support or not in support, and I also hear, hear their calls for deeper affordability. The question is, how do we do that, and how do we subsidize that in a way that we don't have, um, we, we don't exclude particular groups, including, including, uh, what I would call the missing middle from Vancouver. So I'm hoping that the middle will be a little less missing, uh, if we keep moving forward with housing that is more affordable. So thank you very much. I will be supporting, and I will need to vote a system favor, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Donato?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you to staff and the applicant, as well as, uh, to all of the residents who phoned in this evening, uh, whether they were in support or not. Um, I do wanna acknowledge, I, I, Counselor Carr kinda hit the nail on the head in terms of, uh, it may not be ideal, um, this is obviously an adaptation from previous, um, housing programs, and I know that staff are looking, uh, at this and reviewing it. I know we'll be bringing back further recommendations next year around how we adapt, um, because we have had feedback that it's, um, it, that, yes, it's been effective in some levels in creating more rental, also moderate income rental, but also that it's also been very challenging to make it work. Uh, but I, I think that we have to keep in mind the fact that, um, we do still have a low vacancy rate in the city, and, um, even, uh, with changes, and we don't know what the future's gonna like, be like, as we've been reminded, uh, I think we need to consider that we do have a low vacancy rate, and also that, um, potentially people who do, um, have the opportunity to live in this building that may be moving from older stocks, and may free that up for other people, and so I think we have to keep that in mind. I, I personally, um, appreciated the changes that were made, in particular around the mass thing and the podium of the tower, um, that was responsive, uh, to the panel, as well as the activation of the lane with townhouses, because again, and that, um, is something that we know is lacking, is the ground-oriented housing in the city, uh, that's more suitable to, uh, families. Uh, I can't tell you how many friends, um, who have been struggling to find that type of housing, because it just isn't within the market, it just hasn't been there in the supply of it. Um, and so I, I applaud that. I think that the, um, focus on, you know, thirty-five percent of the family units is beneficial as well, and also that it is a, a transit-rich area, um, and so I, I see a lot of positives, um, but I also wanna acknowledge that change is incredibly, um, challenging. So I, I recognize, um, some of the feedback we heard from, uh, residents living in the area, and yes, it, it would change, the neighborhood will change, the neighborhood, and our neighborhoods are changing, and, um, but I, and that change can be sometimes difficult, but I also think, um, the city today doesn't look the same as it did a hundred years ago, and a hundred years from now, it probably won't look the same, and I won't be around here for that, I'm sure, but I, I think that, um, it's an attempt to provide the much-needed rental, as well as the moderate income rental, uh, and, uh, so I'm supportive of the project this evening.
Thanks so much. Uh, we're on to Counselor Boyle.
Thanks, um, and I will also be, uh, supporting it, and just want to reiterate a, a few brief things that I think I have said on many projects like this, which is absolutely, I would love to see many more MRRP, uh, projects like this on the west side and other neighborhoods where the, um, impacts, uh, where the levels of incomes of those moving in, um, are lower rather than higher than, uh, the average in the neighborhood. I think that's the direction that we need to go, and so, um, just want to again reiterate how important I think it is that we be legalizing, uh, rental and building more MRRP-type buildings like this, um, in our even more lower-density and, uh, higher-income neighborhoods, um, including where I grew up, uh, in Carersdale and Dunbar, um, and as well, uh, as others have mentioned, um, I, I'd like to see more of this type of project off of arterials, though I know it becomes controversial, uh, but, um, it pains me, um, as it pains others to hear, uh, rental projects sort of referred to as buffers, or, um, or just, uh, focused along arterials, uh, to protect, um, neighborhoods. I don't think that's how we should think of renters, uh, and so would love to see more of this type of project off arterials as well. Um, and then also want to really strongly re- reiterate, uh, that I also think we need more of these types of buildings that are public and non-market housing, and the reality we continue to bump up against is that the market on its own isn't gonna do that, and so, uh, if people are, um, uh, are against this type of project because it's not affordable enough, then we need to be looking very seriously at how we make more affordable housing, um, and how we fund it, particularly how we pay for it together at all levels of government. So, again, I, I'm glad to see this project has no displacement of existing tenants, that there's vacancy control on the number of important, uh, lower-cost rental units, uh, and I know that all of the units in this building will be, um, important, uh, and warm homes for new families in that neighborhood, so, uh, so it's not the solution to all of it, and as I've reiterated, I think we have a ways to go, but I will happily support this project for what it adds to the challenges that we face in the city.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Frye?
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, I, I, I struggle with these types of projects generally, uh, but I do support the, 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 the direction that we're heading with the MRRP projects, and, and specifically around vacancy control, and ensuring that we're, we're meeting some, some better targets than we have in the past, so, so I, I, you know, I, I don't wanna make the, the perfect the enemy, the good. I think MRRP i- in, in general is a really good direction that we're heading, and I'd like to see us do more of that. Uh, it's a big, it's a big building on a, on a, on a, on a fragile, uh, street, but that street, I, I, I really, I, I, I love King's Way for its quirkiness, and I recognize that this is a big, a big impact on, 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 uh, a quirky street, but a, a street that is also kind of in, in decline in many respects, and there are a lot of, uh, shops that are, that are getting, uh, that, as one of the speakers alluded to, that are boarded up or aren't recovering, and, and I really appreciate some of the, the conditions of approval in the form of development that are supplied, uh, by the proponent, uh, and through Urban Design Review, and, you know, specifically some of the stuff around the commercial areas, uh, ensuring that there's gonna be some more granularity and, and fine-grained commercial frontage. And I hope that one of the pieces that isn't articulated here, but that gets picked up by the developer, and, and, and through the Urban Design Review, is, is that the, that granularity and those small retail frontages really reflect, uh, what Little Sagon has to offer, and, and, and it, and it actually helps to support that rather than diminish from it, because I do hear, uh, concerns from, from folks who live there about this will gentrify and diminish the block, and, and I, and I, and I recognize that the direction that's being established here by the proponent is, is one that, that could actually enhance the block, and I hope that they follow through on that in a, in a really thoughtful manner, and we know that that's been done and can be done, and really reflect on the Little Sagon. I also wanna give a little shout-out to the idea of the parklet. I think there's some really thoughtful pieces to this development. I really like the parklet that's included, uh, in this, in this development as well. I think that's a thoughtful approach, so, uh, I'll support this. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks very much. Uh, if I can just say here at the close, that just really appreciate the, uh, the proponent of this project, uh, and, uh, you don't have to build MRRP projects, so I'm grateful that you're, you're, uh, you're joining us in this piloting. Uh, I just think of, um, you know, when I moved to Vancouver, and I was earning basically minimum wage, uh, and a made, a minimum wage worker in Vancouver now makes just about thirty thousand dollars a year. So we're, we're just about there. We're almost found a model where we can produce new units for folks that are making minimum wage, and if you have two people living on minimum wage, of course, you can, you can, uh, you can start moving into these units, which is great. So that's, uh, places for artists and people starting out careers, and then, uh, you know, no corridors, everybody's in the same building, uh, coming and going, and I think it's, it's a really a great contribution to, to our city, and it's tough, because it, it is messing with, uh, in some ways, it, our idea of what, uh, particular neighborhoods are, but, um, but I think from the level of support we saw tonight, and, and through the, uh, letters and, and emails that we've received, that this is, this is something that, that citizens, residents of our city are, are liking. So, so I'm, uh, you know, I'm, I'm happy to, to support this, and, and I hope we see more of these. So, and then I think four hundred and fifty jobs as, in, in terms of construction as we're moving into, uh, if we're not already in a recession, is, is gonna be welcome. So, so that's what I've got to say, and, and, uh, I'll call the vote now on this, uh, on This has the clerks to, uh, put the vote up on screen, too, when we're finished, and we're just waiting for, oh, Counselor DeGenova, you said you wanted a vote-
I asked for votes in favor, please, Mr. Mayor.
In favor. That's great. Okay, um, so if clerks can pull that up on screen, I see we've got, uh, this passes with Counselor Swanson and Counselor Hardwick in opposition. Thank you very much, council. It is ten minutes to nine, um, uh, before we move on to our next project, perhaps we could just take five minutes to stretch and, uh, come back at, in, in vote five. So five to nine, we'll reconvene. So clerks, I'm just going to go ahead then.
Yes, Mayor Stewart, you do have corn.
Okay, thanks. Uh, so the clerk's going to now read the application and some correspondence received. Go ahead, clerks.
This is an application by Park Lane River District Developments Limited, West Group Properties to amend the CD1 566 district and the East Fraserlands Official Development Plan bylaws to permit secured rental housing and retail uses on parcels fourteen and nineteen with no additional floor area and to increase parcel nineteen floor area by one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight square meters or twenty thousand square feet to permit a community energy center. The proposal includes moving the forty-nine space childcare center from parcel nineteen to an alternative location in East Fraserlands. Since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list and receipt of public comments, council has received six pieces of correspondence and opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to five twenty PM today.
Thanks so much for that. And I'll just ask, um, if there are any speakers to this item which to speak to council, please call toll-free, one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three, followed by participant code one five three one five hashtag to get on the list. And that number's available on the live stream as well. Uh, we have Kirsten Robinson from the, uh, uh, community planning, uh, to, uh, to present. And we do have one speaker, council, so we probably will go ahead with the slides. Let's see if I can call it, turn it over to, uh, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please go ahead and we can see your slides too.
Great, thanks. Uh, good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Kirsten Robinson. I'm the planner responsible for the East Fraserlands. EFL, also known as the River District, is a hundred and twenty-eight acre site located in the southeast corner of Vancouver. It is bound by Kerr Street to the west, Boundary Road to the east, Marine Way to the north, and the Fraser River to the south. It also includes a triangular parcel in the northeast corner of the site. The proposed amendments apply to thirty-three fifty Marine Way, parcel fourteen, and thirty-five sixty-five Sawmill Crescent, parcel nineteen. The proposed amendments would allow for an extension of retail uses on Sawmill Crescent on parcels fourteen and nineteen, inclusion of rental housing as a use to enable approved floor area currently limited to office use to be built to secured market rental housing on parcels fourteen and nineteen, an increase in floor area by twenty thousand square feet to permit a community energy center on parcel nineteen, and relocation of the forty-nine space childcare center from parcel nineteen to the community center site or another parcel in EFL. Planning for EFL has been underway since two thousand and two, following closure of the White Pines Sawmill. The process has been a collaborative effort between the community, city staff, and the developer, West Group Properties. The EFL policy statement completed in two thousand and four envisions a complete and sustainable community, including a variety of housing opportunities with a range of supporting amenities. The EFL official development plan approved in two thousand and six includes approximately seven point eight million square feet of development, including housing, shops and services, a network of parks and plazas, four childcare centers, affordable housing sites, two school sites, and a community center. The EFL ODP also requires that twenty percent of the dwelling units be for affordable housing. The first CD1 rezonings of the central neighborhood in Area One were approved by council in two thousand and eight. The Area Two rezonings for the western neighborhood were approved in two thousand and nine, and in two thousand and ten, council approved the EFL Public Amenity Financial Plan and Strategy to guide delivery of the amenities. Development of EFL has been underway for ten years. The parcels shown in blue have been completed, red indicates those under construction, and the purple parcels are currently in design development. There's approximately two point eight million square feet, or roughly thirty-five percent of the floor area completed or under construction. Approximately seventeen hundred units are occupied. In two thousand and seventeen, the city initiated a ten-year review of the EFL ODP to address challenges associated with the decade-long implementation process. Work is ongoing with a report to council anticipated later this year. This report addresses four items that were identified as other amendments in the ODP review work program. Staff recommend consideration of these items in advance of completion of the broader ODP review, as these changes, particularly delivery of rental housing and retail uses on parcel fourteen, can be advanced immediately. It would also allow West Group to proceed with development of the community energy center to serve new buildings as they come online. Parcels fourteen and nineteen are located in the Town Square precinct within Area One. Amendments to CD1 566 and consequential amendments to the EFL ODP are required based on this proposal. This proposed amendment is to extend retail uses on Sawmill Crescent frontage on parcels fourteen and nineteen as shown in red. Currently, the plan allows for flex uses limited to office, commercial, and live-work uses in these locations. There is no increase in floor area and there are no changes to the form of development as a result of this amendment. Staff support this change as it would create a more vibrant retail street and pedestrian experience and enable a greater diversity of potential tenants, thereby strengthening the commercial high street. The proposed amendment, this proposed amendment is to allow rental housing uses on parcel fourteen and nineteen. This amendment would enable up to a hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet to be delivered as a office or secured market rental housing, which could yield approximately two hundred and fifty units of rental housing. There is no increase in floor area and there are no changes to the form of development as a result of this amendment. The approved design guidelines for parcel fourteen are included on this slide showing the location of the proposed rental building. Staff support this change as it is, is anticipated that West Group will move ahead with development of a hundred and seventy-eight units of secured market rental housing on parcel fourteen in the near term. This proposed amendment is to add a permanent energy center to the northeast corner of parcel nineteen. This change results in an additional two hundred, or twenty thousand square feet of floor area to CD1 566. The additional floor area requires adjustments to the previously approved form of development. As such, replacement pages to the Area One design guidelines are needed. The proposed changes are attached as appendix D. Staff support this change, subject to the conditions included in appendix C, as the permanent energy center would replace two temporary facilities and provide heat energy to the new community. This location within the plan, close to the highest demand for heating loads, is considered to be optimal for minimizing heat loss during transmission. In addition to the amendments proposed by the developer, staff recommend amending the ODP to move the forty-nine space childcare facility from parcel nineteen to the community center site. The city is responsible for the build-out of the childcare centers in EFL, using DCLs as they become available. As parcel nineteen is a market development site, timing of construction is controlled by the developer. Shifting the childcare facility to a city-owned site enables the development to proceed as funding is available. If funding is not available when the community center is built, then a subsequent shift to Area Three, a future phase, may be required. The proposed changes for parcels fourteen and nineteen have been part of a larger package of amendments included in the EFL ODP ten-year review. The ODP review has included a robust engagement plan with four stages of public consultation. The process also included a progress update to council in July twenty eighteen. The final phase of engagement for the ODP review was held in September twenty nineteen. The open houses, open houses were held on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth and Saturday, September twenty-eighth at the River District Center located onsite. A total of five thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine notifications were distributed within the neighboring area. Approximately a hundred and fifty-two people attended the open houses and fifty-seven comment forms were received. The public feedback was primarily in response to the comprehensive package of ODP amendments, of which the changes to parcel fourteen and nineteen are relatively minor items. No detailed comments about the proposed amendments were received. The applicant has offered a CAC of three point five million, which has been reviewed by real estate services. CACs will be allocated to the community center as set out in the two thousand and ten EFL Public Amenity Financial Plan and Strategy. The community energy center will be subject to nominal charges under the DCL bylaw. As the energy center is part of a larger development on parcel nineteen, the additional floor area will generate thirty-nine thousand six hundred dollars of public art revenue. In conclusion, staff recommend approval of the proposed package of amendments to CD1 566 and the EFL ODP. These amendments would allow for extension of retail uses on Sawmill Crescent to enhance the public realm and retail experience, allow for approved floor area currently limited to office use to enable approximately two hundred and fifty units of secured market rental housing, increase of floor area by twenty thousand square feet to permit community energy center to provide heat energy to the buildings within EFL, and move the forty-nine space childcare center from parcel nineteen to the city-owned community center site to allow for greater flexibility for delivery. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions council may have. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much for your, uh, presentation and, uh, just wondering if the applicant team is here to speak to the application?
Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Uh, hi, Brad Jones, Vice President of Development with West Group Properties. Uh, I'm here to speak to the application along with, uh, Ross Hanson, uh, from River District Energy.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, so, uh, council, uh, this is, uh, an opportunity to ask questions to staff or the applicants and I'll just go check out the, uh, uh, okay, I don't see, oh, councillor Swanson. Go ahead councillor Swanson, up to five minutes. I think you might be on mute. Still on mute, there you go.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering about the daycare, um, by switching it from parcel nineteen over to the community center, what does that do in terms of the timing of getting it built?
Thank you for the question, councillor Swanson. This is Kirsten Robinson. Um, there are four childcare centers currently planned in EFL, the first of which is located, um, just east, or west of the site in the west Fraserland. We're currently starting to gear up for delivery of that community center, hiring, um, architects and the design team to advance that building. Um, the second childcare facility in, in the pipeline is the currently planned sixty-nine space facility on the roof of the community center. This, um, parcel nineteen forty-nine space childcare center is sort of the third facility in the queue to be delivered in EFL. Parcel nineteen currently has a surface parking lot that's required to be maintained until two thousand and twenty-four through the lease agreement between the developer and the grocery store provider. Uh, staff think that the timeline for delivery is roughly the same, whether it was on parcel nineteen or on the community center site, and it'll be, the limiting factor will be available funding.
So, you're saying it doesn't make any difference whether it's moved or not, in terms of the timing of opening it, opening it up?
Yes, that's what we understand.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you councillor Weep.
I have a couple of questions. The first one is moving from commercial space to rental space as an outright, um, opportunity for the parcel fourteen. I'm just wondering, as we try to look at complete communities, what was the staff's, um, kind of thought process on switching that usage when we're looking to create jobs all around the city?
Thank you for the question. Um, the inclusion of the hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet of office space was originally at the request of the developer during the rezoning phase back in two thousand and eight. Um, they had an, uh, tenant in mind at the time and they, uh, no longer believe that they'll be able to easily tenant those spaces and have proposed the rental housing as an alternative form.
Okay, and in some of the future phases, is there an opportunity to increase commercial space? space if jobs are, become a priority moving forward?
Uh, yes, that's possible. We've also left the office use as a permitted use, and so if things change for the developer prior to construction of parcel nineteen, there's still an opportunity to deliver that floor area of office space on that parcel. They have a little bit more flexibility and are able to respond to demand at this time.
Okay, my last question's on accessibility. I know that there was talk about at Kinross having an elevator that would allow for transition from the upper community down to the lower community, beside a creek ravine at Kinross Creek. I'm just wondering, in any of these parcels, has it been looked at as an opportunity to create a public elevator to help with the transition in elevation, to ensure that this community is better connected with Champlain Heights and some of the neighbouring communities?
Hello, Mayor and council, this is Carson Chant from Engineering. There have been three upland connections identified as part of the EFL plan, none that are in elevator form, but there are several that have been looked at for accessibility opportunities, including one that is on the east end of EFL. It's just above the cul-de-sac where Sawmill Crescent East is located. There's also options that we're exploring to create accessible pathways up towards Ever Crowley Park through the park space at the top of Kinross Street. There's also a staircase that we're looking at in creating that would be located at the top of River District Crossing. However, due to great challenges and the narrow width of that corridor, it would likely only be possible to construct staircase.
And how come we're not looking at public elevators? I know we're looking at communities like Lawnsdale and others that have put in elevators that have worked, and recognizing that Kinross is a perfect elevation where you could have it go all the way up, so people could connect to Ever Crowley and really connect the neighbourhoods. And I know that park boards, interconnectivity, and accessibility are big kind of priorities of the city, so I'm just wondering, seeing that there is CACs in this project, is there an opportunity for us to work with? I guess this would be the proponent too, has West Group looked at recognizing the ability to connect their district to other parts of the city, using elevators and pedestrian crossings similar to the one on Second Avenue?
Carson, did you want to respond to any of that, or do you want me to respond to the second part?
Maybe I can jump in Brad, it's Kirsten Robinson. We have looked, as Carson said, at three connections, one in the Kinross corridor alignment, Park Sport is working on a pedestrian path through there currently. The second opportunity, as Carson mentioned, is sort of at the eastern end of the site, there's an existing staircase we're looking at upgrading. The third opportunity is the connection across from High Street up to Matheson, which is the steepest grade. We have had some preliminary conversations about that, but haven't advanced too far yet. Brad, if you wanted to add, happy for you too.
No, I don't have much to add councillor Weave. The only thing I would add is, you know, we've worked through those ideas with staff, and ultimately, the amenity delivery and off-site upgrades are part of the whole master plans. We've worked collaboratively with staff on those. The only other thing I would add to Kirsten's answer is the addition of bus transit in the community that does go up north, so while it's, you know, still existing pedestrian challenges, I think, on the north side of Marine, and as you go up, you know, there was a fair bit of public interest in having a transit connection that ran north and connected that community to the retail in River District, and that's in place now.
Okay, and then final question, the childcare adding to the community centre, does that mean the community centre will have a larger footprint and square footage, or are we looking to have a more vertical community centre to meet the needs of the community?
The current strategy is to locate this forty-nine space as a second childcare on the top floor of the community centre, because the contiguous open space is important to the functioning of the programme. The design of the community centre is anticipated to come in the next few years, as we work with West Group on the Area One rezoning, when some of those details will get worked out.
Okay, and the school, the elementary schools, is there a timeline on that to work with in this context?
There's a site provided for the VSB to utilise, it's been zoned since two thousand and ten. We haven't had any active conversations lately with the school board, as we understand it, as long as there's capacity in the schools in close proximity to East Fraserlands, there's less pressure for development of the school site, but we'll work with them whenever they are ready to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Okay, that's it, council for questions to staff and the applicant. Just going to read out the number again for speakers, I'd like to speak to this, one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three, participant code one five three one five hashtag to get on the list. And I believe clerk, there is a speaker?
Yes, mayor, this is the clerk here. We have one speaker registered for this matter, Sharon Gregson.
Great, okay, we could have Miss Gregson on, that'd be, that'd be good, thank you. Your line is open, Sharon, you can speak.
Thank you, and hello everybody, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening, getting late now for everybody. My name is Sharon Gregson, I work with the Coalition of Childcare Advocates of BC, and I'm also a longtime resident of Vancouver. I'm speaking today to the indefinite delay of the childcare programme being proposed for these Fraserlands, and I'm sure that you'll agree, it's incredibly disappointing for the city to be in this position now, with no childcare now in the community, being so recently planned, and still under development, with, as we've heard, millions and millions of square feet in play, and many, many hundreds of housing units overall. So it's especially disappointing, as we know, so much of Vancouver is already described by the experts nationally as a childcare desert, with at least three children vying for every one licensed space that exists now. And by indefinitely delaying the childcare development in these Fraserlands, it will be condemned to be yet another childcare desert neighbourhood in our city. Moving the forty-nine spaces to the community centre, where there's already sixty-nine spaces planned, but acknowledging that there is no timeline, no detail, it'll be at least a few years before this detail, and even so, there's no funding commitment. This seems especially relevant here and now. This council posted a YouTube video just last year, where you all spoke so passionately, and I quote, "That access to quality and affordable childcare is essential to healthy, resilient, and equitable communities." And I'm sure we all agree that these Fraserlands community should be healthy, resilient, and equitable. And so I want to thank the councillors who were in that video, councillor Carr, Frye, councillor Dominato, councillor Boyle, councillor Swanson, councillor Bly, councillor De Genover, and councillor Kirby Young, and mayor Stewart, for speaking in that video publicly on the value of childcare. The video also mentioned that Vancouver already, and that was in two thousand and nineteen, had a licensed space shortfall of seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand spaces already that we don't have. The pandemic that we're all living through has demonstrated how right you all were at that time to call childcare essential. Most recently, Dr. Bonnie Henry, Premier Horgan, and Prime Minister Trudeau have all said publicly many times that childcare is in fact an essential service. So it's unclear to me, and I'm sure to all parents with young children in Vancouver, why decision-makers would permit a community to be built, inviting in hundreds or thousands of residents, while postponing childcare indefinitely. It's even more perplexing when in the city of Vancouver's own two thousand and nineteen Phase One Employment Lands and Economy Review, almost every sector, from high-tech to nonprofits, identified childcare as a major barrier to employee attraction, retention, economic mobility, and economic resilience. So, I have two requests. Number one, it is so important that council does not find itself in this type of childcare mess again, with thousands of new home, housing units being built, new communities being created without childcare. So I urge you to consider a provision for childcare, that it be a requirement of developers separate from and in addition to the community amenity contribution calculation. And secondly, I ask that you be bold, and that you empower your staff to be creative, and to ensure that childcare is built into East Fraserlands now, not at some undefined, unknown future date. So with that, I thank you very much for your attention this evening, and for your commitment to this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you do have questions from councillor Carr? Councillor Carr, please go ahead.
Yes, thanks, first of all, just, Miss Gregson, thank you so much for your passionate advocacy around childcare, you've been on this for many, many, many years, and I just really want to thank you for that work that you've put into this. So we did hear from staff in response to questions earlier, that, that the actual delivery time of the childcare would not be changed with the change in location. So if the timing is not different, does the location matter to you?
Well, I've heard varying opinions actually on, on the, on the timing, and certainly the location is an issue. It's more of an issue, though, that there is no actual commitment as to where or when. So I think staff said that it, that the first, it's not going to be in parcel nineteen, then moving it to the community centre, but if not the community centre, then somewhere else. So there's no actual defined commitment of where it's going to be, and even more vague on when. And I think that we've, what we don't need is more, more vagary around childcare, we need council to send a message that we actually want childcare to be delivered more quickly, not put off into the future.
Yeah, I certainly will, will take those questions back to staff after we finish the speakers, hearing from speakers. I have to say, though, that, you know, I wasn't on council when the decision was made around the establishment of the whole East Fraserlands, but, but the whole time that I've been elected, I have heard from residents around their frustration with the delivery of public services, childcare amongst them, and how slow that is. So I take to heart your comment about the timing. Thanks, thanks a lot for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that's it for questions. Thank you very much for waiting and calling in and, and offering your sage advice, very much appreciate it. And, great, and so clerks, I'm going to be, again, I'll be calling for speakers, one eight three three, I've my glasses on here, one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three, participant code fifteen three one five hashtag. Are there any other speakers on the list, clerks or moderator?
There are none at the moment.
Clerks, anyone in the chambers?
This is the clerk, mayor Stewart, and there is no one waiting to speak in the chamber.
Okay, thanks very much, I'm going to call a second time then. And if you'd like to speak to this item, you call one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three, participant code fifteen three one five hashtag. And the phone number is available on the live stream and on Twitter. That's the second call. And perhaps I'll check with the moderator if anybody's happened to call in.
This is the moderator, no one has joined.
Okay, one last call then, my third and final call, one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three, participant code one five three one five hashtag to get on the list. And clerks, any indication that anybody else wants to speak to this?
This is the clerk here, mayor Stewart, and we're not seeing any further speakers at this point.
Okay, so seeing there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed, and as few or no public comments were received on this item after five PM today, we'll close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, and further questions to staff, make a decision. Applicant have any closing comments?
Yeah, thank you, just would like to thank staff as always for their hard work, and we look forward to continuing to work with them and yourselves on the ODP review and master plan work to improve the delivery of the city amenities that are to come.
Okay, thanks very much. Staff have any closing comments?
Yes, mayor Stewart, it's Susan Hay, Deputy Director of Long Range Planning. Good evening, mayor and council. I just wanted to make a few closing comments from the team. We, as Brad Jones just mentioned, this is really one amendment in a series that council has received and will receive later this year on the ten-year ODP review for the East Fraserlands. So there are significant amendments from that review and enhancements coming to council later this year. The amendments proposed this evening are a very important opportunity to realise approximately a hundred, hundred and seventy units of rental housing, sorry, two fifty total on parcels fourteen and nineteen, with the amendment proposed in Area One. Those, that, the addition of rental housing also increases the retail use while maintaining the office use on the site, should that be preferable in the future. We are very aware of the comments from council and the speaker regarding the realisation of childcare in EFL, and staff are working extremely hard to realise the first childcare, which was, the site was relocated to West Fraserlands a few years ago, and that childcare is number one on our list in terms of funding, and receives partial funding from the province. So we anticipate that one coming online sooner versus later, with the second one planned on the community centre, and should council approve the amendments this evening, for the third one to be realised on the community centre or in Area Three. We're very aware, and certainly the, the DCLs for the area are focused on realising amenities, including childcare. It's important to recognise that a lot of the, a lot of the funding from DCLs and NECACs have been going to realise affordable housing and social housing. So we are actively working on the social housing sites with six hundred units in process. So with that, we just close our comments from staff, and thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thanks very much. Council have any questions to staff? Just put yourself on the list. I don't see any questions for staff, so we're going to make our decision now. Do we have a mover for the recommendation?
So move councillor Bly?
Councillor Bly, a seconder?
Councillor Carr.
Thank you councillor Carr, and I have councillor Swanson on the list.
Yes, I have a short little amendment.
Okay.
Basically, just to try and get the childcare spaces expedited and get a report back by the end of the year on how this can be done.
Okay, maybe clerks can pull it up on the screen for us?
It's up for me.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the, having trouble with my orange cone all day, so, I have it by another source, so, I just want to make sure the rest of council has it. Okay, did you want to speak to it councillor Swanson?
Well, I just think it's really important that we get childcare down there, and we have the... have the rep from the childcare coalition coming here and telling us how important it is. And as most of us in council are women, we know how important it is anyway, and if we could speed it up a bit, I think that would be great.
Okay. Do we have a seconder for this?
Second, councillor Bly.
Okay, councillor Bly, thank you very much. You'll put us over, actually, we're on the amendment queue, so if anybody wants to speak this, please put yourself on the list. I don't see anybody, so we'll call a vote on this amendment. Councillor De Genova, do you need a vote assist? Councillor De Genova? Clerks, do we, is councillor De Genova on? Just looking here. I don't, there's councillor, I see her on, plugged in, but I don't, can you try giving her a call, see if she's okay on the votes?
This is the clerk here, Mayor. Yes, we will endeavor to get in touch with councillor De Genova, if you could just wait a few minutes. Mayor Stewart, the clerk here. It appears councillor De Genova is back.
Okay, councillor De Genova, I just need you to cast your vote. Councillor De Genova, do you need a vote assist? Clerks, have you spoken to councillor De Genova on the phone?
Mayor Stewart, it's the clerk here again. Yes, we had her, and we're just, we have her on the phone right now, and she would like a vote assist in favor. She wishes to have a vote assist in favor.
Okay, thank you. So that's passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, council, we have that amendment down, we're back to the main queue. Anybody else want to say anything to this motion? Amended motion?
Because I got cut off. So I will, I will vote no to that.
No to, sorry councillor De Genova, we can hear you. And we, we were told through the clerks that your vote assist was a yes to the amendment, and that passed unanimously now.
Mayor Stewart, we have not ended the vote. I believe councillor De Genova, she can speak for herself, but I'm understanding that she was not certain as to what she was voting on.
Okay, councillor De Genova? Clerks, could you ask councillor De Genova if she's just absent, or if it's a technical problem?
Yes, Mayor Stewart, we will endeavor to do that right now.
Thank you.
Hi. Sorry, so sorry, yes, am I on the line?
Yes, you are.
Oh, I'm getting a lot of feedback, Mr. Mayor, and some echoes. I can't even hear anything except yes, you are.
We're just wondering, you know, we're just, I'm sure you've been following along the application, we're just trying to complete a vote on, a report back on childcare?
Public hearing.
We can still, we can still hear you, councillor De Genova. Clerks, any idea what's happening there?
Mayor Stewart, we're endeavoring to call her again. We keep reaching her, and it gets disconnected.
What?
Sure, councillor De Genova?
Mr. Mayor, I'm back. Sorry, just, I didn't hear anyone, and I'd been, I tried to call in because I've got kicked off when I tried to log into the WebEx.
Uh-huh, okay.
So it's, we're voting on, it's over at 9:25, not 9:23, correct? Because the feed's a few minutes ahead on the other side. Just wanted to make sure that it's been met.
We're just trying to complete it. We're just trying to complete a vote.
I just wanted to make sure I know what I'm voting on, that council expedite creation of childcare spaces in the EFL and report back by Q4 on how this can be done. Is that correct?
That's the one.
Okay. You know what, Mr. Mayor, I will abstain from that.
Okay, thanks very much. And that passes with none in opposition. Council, we don't have anybody else on the queue to speak, so we're going to call a vote on this amended motion. So Clerks, if you could pull it up, that would be great.
Okay, so now this is the motion as amended.
Councillor De Genova, do you need assist on this as well?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to get in on my computer, but in favor, please, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
On amended motion.
That's right, so that passes, with your vote passes unanimously. Thank you, council. And we're on to our last item, which is, let me find it here, um, sorry, number two, yeah, there we go, amendments to the Falls Creek area plan for Area 10B. We have 25 minutes left, we'll see how we do, so maybe the clerk can read this application.
This is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability to amend the Falls Creek area development plan for Area 10B, area development plan, to create a new development area for the site located at 1595 West Second Avenue. The amendments would permit the future development of a six-story affordable rental residential building with commercial uses on the ground floor. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers' list and receipt of public comments. Eight pieces of correspondence in support, 14 pieces of correspondence in opposition, and two pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:20 PM today.
Okay, thanks very much. We have Scott Bell from Community Planning here. We do have speakers, so Mr. Bell, we'll ask you to go through your slides. There you go.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm just wanting to make sure that you, oh, just want to make sure that you can hear me and see the slides, okay?
Yep, we can, take it away, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. My name is Scott Bell, planner for the proposed amendments to the Falls Creek area development plan for Area 10B. This site is located at the corner of West Second Avenue and First Street. The site was the most northern portion of the Arbutus Railway corridor, now known as the Arbutus Greenway, and is one of seven option land sites within the Greenway, which will become more particularly defined in the next few slides. The proposed amendments will allow for a six-story rental residential development with commercial on the ground floor, having 20% of the rental floor area secured for households earning below $80,000 a year. In 2016, the City of Vancouver purchased the Arbutus Corridor from Canadian Pacific Railway. The purchase agreement between the city and CPR required that the city identify portions of the corridor not required for transportation purposes. Due to engineering and safety constraints, the sites between West First and West Fifth Avenues were identified as not being required for transportation purposes, and these formed the option lands in the purchase agreement. The purchase agreement requires that the city rezone and subdivide these sites. Once the sites have been rezoned, CPR has the option to repurchase the lands back from the city for $1. The subject site is illustrated by the red stars on this slide. A streetcar has been contemplated in this area since the 1990s. In 2002, council approved both the downtown transportation plan and the Vancouver transit strategy, which anticipated a downtown streetcar with possible extensions to Vanier Park and along the Arbutus Corridor. Over time, the city has been furthering this work and securing right-of-way opportunities for future streetcar implementation. The graphic on the left of this slide is from the 2019 streetcar feasibility study. The proposed amendments preserved opportunities for streetcar along West Second Avenue and extensions to the north and the south along First Street. In July 2018, city council endorsed the Arbutus Greenway design vision, which identified multiple options to connect the Arbutus Greenway northward to Falls Creek and Granville Street Bridge, as shown by the image on the right, and includes a cycling connection along Pine Street to West First Avenue and to continue to the Seawall, as shown in purple, a walking and potentially cycling facility under the First Street off-ramp of the Granville Bridge to connect directly to Granville Island, and a walking and cycling connection to the planned Granville Bridge Greenway, likely along West Fifth Avenue. The first step in planning for the option lands was completed in 2018 after council approved amendments to the Arbutus Corridor ODP and regional context statement, as illustrated in this graphic. These amendments remove transportation requirements, allowing the sites to retain their existing zoning entitlements, C2B, IC1, and for the subject site, FCC DD. The proposed amendments for the subject site are the final step in planning for the option lands and are necessary to fulfill the city's obligation in the purchase agreement. The purchase agreement between the city and CPR requires that the city make reasonable efforts to complete the planning process for the option lands prior to the fourth anniversary of the closing date, which corresponds to March 2020. The graphic on this slide illustrates the option lands' planning timeline. The amendments within this report represent the final step in planning for the option land sites. Should council approve the amendments, the city's obligation to rezone and subdivide the option lands will be satisfied, and CPR will be given the option to repurchase the sites back from the city. If approved, a future landowner would be able to submit a development permit application based on the direction in the area development plan. The subject site is currently zoned FCC DD and is surrounded by C2B and IC1 zoning to the south and the west. FCC DD zone buildings to the north of the site range in heights from three to six stories, many of which are leasehold buildings on city-owned land. C2B zoning allows for commercial and dwelling uses with a density up to 2.5 FSR and a conditional height up to 15.3 meters. IC1 zoning allows for light industrial use with a density up to three FSR and a height up to 18.3 meters. The site is also in close proximity to the Squamish-Synoc development site, as well as a Molson Brewery site. The subject site, which is illustrated by the red star on this graphic, is located within the Falls Creek area development plan for Area 10B boundary, which is shown by the white hatch in this graphic. Area 10B is a development area contained within the Falls Creek official development plan boundary. Both the Falls Creek ODP and the Falls Creek area development plan provide high-level guidelines and policy requirements for development in the area. The direction in the ODP and the area development plan helps inform the proposed form and use for the subject site. The subject site is unique from other option land sites because it is located within the Falls Creek ODP boundary and does not have any underlying zoning. The site is currently designated for rights-of-way and other residual areas. The amendments presented in this report seek to create a new development area within the area development plan, illustrated by the graphic on the right, with specific development To determine an appropriate use for the site, planning staff assessed existing city policy to inform optimal use and form of the subject site. The Falls Creek ODP and area development plan, as well as the Falls Creek vision and principles, provided policy direction and intent in the Falls Creek South area. Broader council policies, such as the Housing Vancouver Strategy, provided citywide objectives for housing affordability and is reflected within the proposed amendments. While future planning for the Broadway and Falls Creek South may result in changes in the neighborhood, current council policies, like the Falls Creek ODP and Falls Creek vision and principles, were the basis for determining an appropriate form of development for the site. Four development goals were established at the outset of the planning process for the site. These goals were used to envision the future for the site that is appropriate to the existing context, utilizes vacant land, integrates into the community, and increases housing options and affordability. The proposed amendments will allow for a future, would allow for a future development of a six-story rental residential building with commercial on the ground floor. The amendments would allow for a maximum gross floor area of 82,000 square feet, or 7,618 square meters. To meet the housing objectives in the Falls Creek ODP and the Falls Creek vision and principles, as well as the Housing Vancouver Strategy, at least 20% of the rental housing floor area will be secured at below-market rents, generally consistent with the city's moderate-income rental housing program. Through the development permit process, the building will be required to be designed with upper levels terraced and stepped back to reduce the scale of the building, provide outdoor opportunities, and to minimize shadow impacts on adjacent buildings. Building setbacks to enhance commercial frontages and to enable transportation and a future streetcar movement are required, as shown in the image. The graphic on this slide shows a view looking northeast and illustrates a proposed building scale in the existing context. Similar to the previous slide, this graphic displays a building scale looking northwest along West Second Avenue. A community open house was hosted on November 19th at the Falls Creek Community Centre. City staff, in a total of approximately 110 people, attended the open house. Staff received 47 feedback forms, both online and in person. Respondents were generally in support of the proposed form and density, the prospective land use, and supported the onsite rental housing. Concerns about the proposal included current and future traffic congestion, the height of the development and corresponding shadow impacts, the loss of public parking, and as well residents of the waterfall building have expressed concerns about the six-story form planned on Second Avenue. Staff also presented information about the proposal to the Falls Creek South Replan Housing Subcommittee and the Vancouver City Planning Commission. Both groups expressed general support for the proposal, with interest in allowing co-op housing as an alternative use to rental. Concerns about the potential shadow impacts, parking, streetcar, and ensuring a future development on the site responds to changing context were also communicated. A petition in support of the proposal containing 35 signatures was also received by members of the community who live and work near the subject site. While the majority of the comments from respondents to the petition were in favor of the proposal, some suggested the building could be taller than six stories. Since referral of the report on April 28th, as of 5:20 today, staff have received correspondence from 24 people, of which eight earned support, 14 opposed, and two classified as other. In general, the concerns are related to building height, the site's relationship to the waterfall building across the street, reduction in parking, and future transportation In conclusion, staff recommend the proposed amendments to the development plan for Area 10B. If approved, the final step in planning for the option lands will be completed, and the city's obligation in the purchase agreement will be met. The proposed amendments are in keeping with the intent and direction of existing city policy, such as the Falls Creek ODP and Falls Creek vision and guiding principles. Furthermore, these amendments help to achieve citywide goals related to increased supply of rental housing and affordability. Staff are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, staff, for that. Council, we are at...
Point of parliamentary procedure.
Okay, councillor Carr?
Yes, I'd like to move a motion, Mr. Mayor, to extend this meeting to hear from speakers and delay questions to staff and decision to the appropriate council reserve as determined by the city clerk.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a seconder for that?
Councillor De Genova?
Seconder? Yep, councillor De Genova seconded, okay. Thanks, so I'll put us on the...
Mr. Mayor, councillor Dominado, point of information.
Sure.
Just briefly, can we get clarification, the clerks, what date that council reserve will be?
Clerks?
Yes, it's the clerk here, Mayor Stewart and council. What I would recommend is you could defer questions to staff and debate and decision to the council meeting following the standing committee tomorrow.
Okay, that's okay, councillor Carr, if we make that...
Fine, that's, I'm trusting the city clerk to give us the right advice on this.
Okay, thanks. So we have a seconder, so we can call yays and nays on this. So all in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, that's passed, so... Okay, that's passed, so away we go. Thanks very much, councillor Carr, for that. And so, we heard from staff, and, okay, is the applicant here? Oh, sorry, since the city of Vancouver is the applicant, move on to questions to staff. So councillor Carr, do you have any questions? I've got you on the queue here.
No, I actually, my motion deferred or referred questions to staff.
You're right. Thanks, we're just going to hear from the public. Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for reminding me. And we are on the public queue here, so we have Pat Jacobson first on the list. He's the president of the Strata. Moderator, do we have Pat Jacobson there?
Sorry for the delay, but the line is open, you can speak then.
Thank you very much. You can hear me?
Yeah, actually, if somebody could turn that up just a little bit for us, increase the volume, that would be great.
Thank you very much, mayor and council. My name is Pat Jacobson.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Jacobson, but we still can't hear you. I'm just wondering if the clerks could increase the volume?
Is this any better?
It's a little better. Please go ahead, you have about the five minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Pat Jacobson. I'm president of the Strata Council of 60 Neighbours at the adjacent building, 1515 West Second. I'm speaking on behalf of the neighbours, but I'm also speaking in the capacity of being the former CEO of TransLink, and I was very involved in the extensive cycling and transit infrastructure and city planning in the region. So my comments take into account both the neighbours and the community. I've been a resident of Vancouver for 20 years. I'm speaking against the resolution at this time, and I would ask that it would show, not as one vote against, but representing 60. Our objection at this time is where it is in the process, is that you're convening one public meeting with two weeks' notice on a very significant change in use from transportation to residential and commercial. And it's also in the middle of a pandemic period, where we feel that a number of significant issues are not addressed yet. Specifically, we think it's out of order. First of all, around your own Falls Creek planning process, which was an excellent process in terms of extensive consultation, but it's still at the vision level and it's not at the plan level. And so therefore, showing how that literally fits within the plan would be important. The second is, both that plan and the transportation plan were done before the announcement of the Squamish Nation Development, which is adjacent, and its impact on density in the area. And feel that council should be made more aware of what that linkage is between this site and the Squamish Nations site. The third question that we'd like council to address is the negotiation with Canadian Pacific Railway. Once you pass this, from transportation to residential, commercial, I think the city needs to ask itself whether it loses its leverage with CP and runs the risk of losing the capacity to implement this without having been in a strong position with CP. And lastly, where TransLink feels in terms of its plans, which were developed before, again, the Squamish Nation Development. So what we're asking, mayor and council, is to listen to the comments tonight, but defer any permanent decision on land use until you've had, and direct staff to report back, on the implications of the Squamish Nation Development on density in the area, the implications of the Squamish Nation on the transportation plan for the region, which was done prior to this development. Thirdly, to report back to council on the CPR position, and whether the city runs the risk of losing the opportunity to build on this site. And then lastly, have a public hearing with more discussion on the actual building itself in terms of the scale on such a small site. But thank you very much, mayor and council. We were hopeful that there'd be a longer period in terms of more discussion on the actual building, but also on the transportation implications for this region. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And you do have some questions? Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. At the beginning of your commentary, you mentioned your prior role with TransLink. Could you revisit that with us for a minute?
Yes, I was the CEO of TransLink from 2001 to 2009, and it was in the period where the extensive transportation planning and the transit growth was done, and where there was a lot of involvement with all of the cities, and particularly with the city of Vancouver, around transportation planning.
Well, that's terrific, because there has been memory lapses over time, turnover, et cetera. So you do recall the intention to connect the South Falls Creek Line into the Arbutus Corridor?
Yes.
And understand the importance of having that distributed surface rail component to our local transit system?
Yes, and at the time, TransLink as a regional transportation authority was less interested in terms of a priority in terms of the light rail, but that was also pre this new Squamish development and pre the kind of density that the city has been really good at getting put into the city. So that was probably about 12 years ago. So there was approval to run the streetcar during the Olympics, but not beyond that. But with the density that's going into Falls Creek, that has a huge impact on the transportation plan. And I would argue that the old plan is not viable, that there needs to be a rapid redevelopment of the transportation plan for this region.
So the conditions precedent, the underlying assumptions on which this is based are no longer relevant because of these massive changes that are anticipated going forward?
That would be my position.
So could you just run through, you suggested that we direct staff back to report on that. Could you run through, I think you had four points?
Yeah, I would, this is happening quite quickly, and I think it's happening quite quickly after the Squamish Lands announcement that the city supports, is that I'd ask them to report back on the implications of the Squamish Nation Development on density in the area and on the transportation plan, particularly the transit plan for that region. And then I'd secondly ask them to look at what the implications would be in terms of where else density should be known in the Falls Creek Plan in light of that, because the Falls Creek Plan that was developed was before the Squamish Nation announcement. And so I'm not taking it into account. So I'd ask them to report back on that. And then thirdly, have some more detail and time, you know, kind of five minutes to discuss the actual building, a longer period for the public and the various groups.
I'm only got a limited amount of time, and so I wanted to touch on another thing you talked about, which was the CPR's position and the time sensitivity. You asked about why there would be a rush. Do you have any insight into that?
I have no insight into the rush period, but I do have insight about in terms of leverage. Once it passes from transportation use to residential use, that empowers CPR to have leverage in terms of whether it wants to take advantage of that for a dollar. Now, that is negotiable, but the city may not have a strong negotiating position once it's already made the decision for it to be a development. Your own city lawyers would have a very good view on that.
Yes.
And that's why I think that you might direct council to ask for some legal advice around the negotiation with the CPR. Because I think the last thing the city wants is to enable more housing density, and particularly affordability housing, and then lose that opportunity in terms of negotiation with the CPR.
Thank you very much for your insight.
Thank you.
Sorry, is I mute there? Thanks very much for your time. There are no more questions. Really appreciate you calling in and providing us your thoughts on this project. I'm going to move on to the next speaker now, who is Charlene Rook.
Charlene Rook has not called in yet. A reminder email was sent as a courtesy to remind her, but we haven't heard from her yet.
That reminds me, though, that I should write out the number again, 1-833-353-9183, followed by participant code 15315 hashtag, to get on the list before the close of the speakers list, and that is available on our live feed as well. I'm going to move on to the third registered speaker, Johannes van der Slaak.
Yes.
Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Great. If you have up to five minutes, then let us know if you're a resident of Vancouver. That'd be great.
Sure. My name is Johannes van der Slaak, and I live at the Lagoons in adjacent Strata. And my questions really are for clarification and not a complete understanding of what it is exactly we're dealing with tonight. For example, do we know, is this proposal far enough long? Do we know the number of units that it will have, the types of units? Will there be single-room occupancy included, the size of the units? Is that sort of information known?
Well, actually, in this phase of the process, we're just looking for feedback from you. But it's perfectly legitimate to, you know, propose questions that we can ask for staff when we have that opportunity a little later in this hearing.
Okay. Ownership, according to my reading of the material, ownership of this property goes back to CPR once the proposal has been accepted, is that correct?
Well, again, this isn't, really, this phase of the public hearing is just for us to hear your thoughts, and so it's not really a back-and-forth session, but it's another great question, and I'm sure a councillor or myself will ask staff a little later on in the hearing.
Okay. And finally, in an earlier version of the proposal, there were two buildings. What was put up tonight showed only one building. I wondered what happened to the second building?
Okay, I'll make sure that we take note of those questions and try to get staff to answer them when we get to that portion of the hearing.
Okay, thanks very much. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. And I don't see any questions from councillors, so that's great. Thanks very much for calling in this evening. I'm going to move now to Arnold Silber. Oh, and I believe you're perhaps in person, that's what I see on my list.
Mayor Stewart, this is the clerk here. Yes, Mr. Silber is on his way to the podium.
Okay, great. Thank you.
My name is Arnold Silber, born in Vancouver, and I'm here because to get some clarification, and also, we have a number of investment properties in the area, including the building 1601 West Second, which is immediately across the street from this proposed development. In reading the plan, the first thing that came to me, and I can't get it in my mind that this is being done to satisfy CPR, and based on 82,000 square feet of density at $250 a foot, which would probably be a little undermarket today for that property, that comes to a price of $20,500,000 at $300 a foot, it comes to $24,600,000. And is this what we're giving back to CPR because we're rezoning the property? And as I understand, the city only paid $16 million for the entire Greenway. So that is a major problem, because if that's what the city is doing, rezoning a property that they basically own, and of course CPR is going to take it back for $1. The area where the property is located is comprised of four different zones, existing zones, where properties are developed. And this is within a three-block radius from Berard to Anderson, from First Avenue to Fourth Avenue. The zoning are IC1 and II is a possible zoning, C2B and CD1. In the report, it indicates that the buildings in the area are three to five stories. The C2B zoning, which allows for residential, is only allows for three stories. CD1, special zoning, four stories. And the zoning in IC1 and II in this area is between three and five stories. In 2008, I attended the meeting with city council, and at the time, there was a proposal to develop the area that is now IC1 and IC2, was to develop the area into residential. At that time, we were owners of properties in the area as well, and I spoke against it. And I remember councillor Suzanne Anton said to me, "Mr. Silber, why are you against it? It devalues the value of your properties." And I told her then what I'm going to tell you now. It's not about the devaluation of the properties, it's about what's right for the city and what's right for the area. While housing is very important, and there's a lot of housing in the area, north of, sorry, south of Fourth Avenue, west of Berard, and in the Berard area, we need jobs. This particular property should be rezoned for light industrial use, similar to the I1 and I2, which is just across the street. The property, although it's in the area close by housing, if you look at the design of the area, the frontage of the property is going to face fur on the west side, and it's going to face Second Avenue on the south side. The property is going to be at a T-bone of the lane, on the lane between Second and First. That lane is a very well-used lane, and most of the time has backups with trucks. And the reason for that is because on Second Avenue, there's no parking on the north side of the street. Also, on First Avenue, there's very limited parking because there's a triangle portion of the street that's locked off. So now you're going to bring in a number of people, we're going to have a traffic hazard because of the fact that the traffic, excuse me, because of the fact immediately adjacent to this property is light industrial. Plus, the most important thing to recognise is that this area is becoming the design area. Just recently, we met with a designer on Second Avenue on the second floor, and I asked her, "How do you like this area?" She says, "It's phenomenal." It's phenomenal because it's light, it's phenomenal because the pricing is much lower in rentals than other areas, and it's easy to get to. We're going to destroy that soon.
Mr. Silber, you're at, just over your five minutes, but you do have questions from councillors?
Sure.
And I'll just turn you over to them in a second. Just want to remind council that, again, we have a number of hats, and this is our rezoning hat that we're wearing this evening, so I just want to make sure that your questions reflect that. And if they stray too far off, I'll politely step in and just remind you. So councillor De Jonge, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Thanks very much. Mr. Silber, good evening, and thank you for coming to speak.
Mr. Silber, good evening, and thank you for coming to speak to us, especially so late. I had a question for you regarding some of your comments and the rationale, but mostly around the land economics and wearing my rezoning hat. I'm wondering, do you feel, of course, you don't have to answer my question, but that this could possibly not just, what I heard you say was you might be worried about the artificial inflation of land value?
There's no-
Or precedent setting? So I was hoping that you might be able to answer that question.
Well, I believe if you zone this land for residential, whether this councillor or the next councillor, it will slowly move westward. And that area that I feel should remain as light industrial for jobs, that area within the next 10 or 15 years will be again all residential, and where are people going to work? And I realize, and I realize, councillor, from my position, I'm devaluing our investments substantially, but it's not about money. It's about what's best for Vancouver.
But is it fair to say, I'm just trying to make sure I clarify and understand your comments, that what we do, I mean, we're talking about this rezoning, but we have to look at it in the context of all of Vancouver, so that the less light industrial we have, the more value evaluation-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I wear a hearing aids, and I'm not hearing you that well. Can somebody-
Hear me, Mr. Silber?
Hello?
Hi. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but talk a little slower, if you don't mind.
Oh, okay. So sorry. I only have a few minutes. They time our questions. So I'm wondering, is what you're saying that we have to, I know we have to look at this in the context of this specific, these specific recommendations, but what you're saying is we have to look in the context of the entire city? And the less light industrial we have, the more valuable that land becomes. Is that correct? And did you have anything more to say on that?
No. The reason why it's not more valuable, because you don't have the density for that industrial. When land becomes more valuable, is what the cost, where you can increase, where you can keep the cost for buildable down, but you can get greater density. In this case, most of the-
If you change it to residential, that's what you're saying.
If you put residential on, the values are going to jump crazily.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I, I wanted to make sure I clarified what you were saying. Thank you very much for your comments. I really appreciate them.
Thank you. Councillor Kirby on next.
Hi, Mr. Silber. Good evening. So, question, you are involved with the Industrial Lands Task Force for Metro Vancouver, correct?
That's correct.
Your company? And so, in terms of this perspective that you're sharing, that it would be better off zoned for the industrial, is that the context by which you're putting that recommendation forward?
No.
And do you want to speak a bit as to why you're concerned about industrial, or is it more-
No, actually, I hardly go to the meeting. I hardly go to the, I think I've been to one meeting. Our CEO usually goes. This is a personal basis, having lived in Vancouver all these years. We have, I think we have five or six properties in the area. We are not interested in trying to redevelop them. Our rents are considering, compared to, say, Fourth Avenue or Broadway, the rents there are substantially lower. It's usually a two-floor, these are older buildings, two floors. The new buildings are running now three stories. The IT, one of the zonings, I'm not, one of the zonings in the IC zoning dictates to what type of user you can put in. Now, to give you an idea, the office in that area is about $20 a square foot. So that works out on 1,000 square feet, it works out to $20,000, say, which is approximately $2 per square foot. Apartment rentals in Vancouver, the average rent now is $3.50 per square foot. So it's going to, by putting this proposal in force, is going to, in my opinion, is going to change the dynamics of the industrial area. What I would like to see in that area is an industrial-type building, where we could put, where we could have, and when I say industrial, these are architects, engineers, designers, because it is going to be the design area. And I venture to say that in five years, people will say, "I want to go to the design area." Where in other major cities, we see the same thing. We have beautiful restaurants, funky restaurants. Right now, there's, in that area, as you know, there's a Greek restaurant, which is always full on the corner of, on the corner of Third and Fir. There's the coffee shop, which is always full. This is what we need, and it is a walking area to-
So you're saying that we have an opportunity to build this area up, that is gaining sort of a positive momentum as opposed to halting it?
I'm sorry, you've got to say it again. I didn't hear you.
I said, what I hear you saying is you're saying we have an opportunity to continue to build this area up, that it's been growing with its positive reputation as opposed to halting that development of a design area, kind of a destination light industrial area. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, and that's what, you're hearing it, and plus, all we're doing is putting more money in CPR's pockets. It doesn't make sense. You're subsidizing CPR for their benefit against the people who want to work in this area.
Okay. Thanks. That's really clear. Thank you, Mr. Silber. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, and we have councillor Dominado next. Go ahead, councillor Dominado.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Silber, for coming to council again. Sorry, we can't all be there with you in person, but I did want to follow up. I was going to ask you what your preference would be, and you talked about light industrial. I'm just curious, could you see the application of light industrial combined with housing? Is that something that you could envision?
Yes, you could do that if you wanted to increase the density, and instead of going six stories, maybe going 12 stories, with the top two stories being residential. But in my opinion, it has to be really controlled rental. I listened to the first part of the conversation. I'm totally a believer that we have to help those who are less fortunate. We are, and if you wish, you know that our family does that, and we do it well, because it's about giving back to others. But again, I go back to a situation that that area, 12 years ago when I spoke, it could have been all residential. And I was the one who spoke, and the developer, I forget who he was, but wow, after the meeting, he said to me, "Arnold, what are you doing?" And I said, "I know what I'm doing. I don't need it."
Okay. No, I appreciate the perspective, and in your history around this, I was just, I was curious about the combination of light industrial and housing, and I appreciate you sharing that perspective. Thank you.
But I just wanted to add something. You do have housing next door. You have housing in the, to the north-east of the property. You have housing from Barard westward. You have housing Fourth Avenue southward. You have housing, and quite likely, in the Molson lands, I presume there's going to be housing. Don't take away, don't put housing in where there's an industrial area. If you do that, pretty soon, all we'll have is housing, and people will be working in the valley and perhaps traveling to the valley, and then we're going to lose, we're going to lose this population, and you won't have any problem with rentals because prices will go down.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that's it for questions to you, sir. Thank you very much for coming in, Mr. Silber.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're going to move to Christopher White, who's calling in.
Hey. Go ahead, Christopher. Your line is open.
Thank you. Hello? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, and we can hear you fine.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much. So my name is Christopher White. I live in Vancouver, and I'm speaking tonight in favor of the amendment, and thank you for your time and patience. Please visualize me as a recently retired, healthy Caucasian medical social worker with a rewarding career in public health, Vancouver Coastal and Providence Healthcare. I'm speaking tonight from the bedroom of our townhouse unit in the Falls Creek Co-op, near the seawall, the Falls Creek Public School, and Charleston Park. I'm also a former resident of Marina Co-op, which is adjacent to Site F. Together with my family, we've lived safely and securely in both co-ops for 40 years. I'd like to acknowledge your work as civic leaders for juggling all the responsibilities during this time, as an essential service provider, as our stewards of the environment, as our landlord, and as an employer. I speak tonight on behalf of the authorized Working Group Subcommittee of the Falls Creek Neighborhood Association's Replan Initiative, who you met with yesterday. Thank you again for that meeting, and I know we demonstrated yesterday how well-prepared we are to promote and strengthen the Falls Creek community that we call home. The co-ops I'm speaking on behalf of tonight are Alder Bay, Creekview, Falls Creek, Heritage, Twin Rainbows, Marina, and the Greater Vancouver Floating Home Co-op. The city's planning principles invited development to address contextual land utilization, community building, and housing options for this area. As the amendment specifically includes housing co-ops as a potential development partner, we welcome this opportunity to demonstrate how a housing cooperative is an ideal development partner for Site F. We do think that the decision-making opportunity for you to move forward to make the amendment, you have enough information and can do so responsibly. First, I'd like to address the context from the planning document, where are we, why are we here, that the city has put forward in 2018. The context of Site F, it sits at a nodal point between the Barard Slope commercial downtown area, the future Senacway development, and the Falls Creek residential area. Residents of this neighborhood have over 40 years of successful, safe, affordable living in a multi-use area. Marina Housing Co-op, where I moved to in 1980 with my partner, is just next door. A new co-op at Site F will benefit from joining a family of successful housing partners with deep experience in Falls Creek, providing stable, affordable housing. This includes our long-term partnership with the city to plan, build, and promote Falls Creek as a historical, award-winning inner-city neighborhood. Next, the utilization of the vacant land, honoring the Falls Creek development plan and especially addressing housing affordability. In 2017, the city general manager of planning said, and I quote, "Replan is a unique stakeholder in the city's makeup. It has representatives from all the Strata and Co-op housing enclaves, as well as those on freehold properties and buildings operated by nonprofit housing societies," end quote. I know you were also speaking yesterday about the aging-in-place, intergenerational hub vision for the western edge of Falls Creek. Replan is also actively supporting member cooperatives to plan and finance redevelopment opportunities with all levels of government and other stakeholders. Increasing housing options is the most important reason we think the city should partner with a housing cooperative to develop Site F. A co-op offers unique but enduring investment through a values-based commitment to affordability, diversity, equity, security, and connection. Using a social return on investment approach, a co-op can demonstrate measurable outcomes that benefit residents, housing providers, and the local economy. It can offer a combination of diverse unit types, 100% affordability, and long-term tenure and fiscal responsibility. It can address the right housing needs for existing and future Vancouver employees and their families, and for growing seniors' housing pressures in Falls Creek and its adjoining neighborhoods. It will offer sound financial management and responsible self-governments that has a proven track record with tenants, yourselves, the landlord, and both public and private stakeholders. Finally, a housing co-op will integrate into the community, including the Waterfall Building, by drawing on a wealth of growing knowledge and expertise here dedicated to a revisioning process in designing and livability. Site F is especially important as a community-edged site, adjoining both neighborhood industrial supports for downtown, other area residences, and the soon-to-be-created Senacway development. Its location adjacent to a multi-use transportation corridor also means the site could provide a community-defining entranceway. Several other housing co-ops already provide such significance, such as Creekview at the entrance to Granville Island, and the Falls Creek and Floating Homes co-ops adjacent to the parkland and seashores respectively. The official development plan, guiding planning principles created for Falls Creek South have greater resonance today than when they were drafted several years ago. These 10 principles are essential guideposts as we gradually renew this vital part of Vancouver. A housing cooperative can do this responsibly, ethically, and healthfully. We are prepared to deepen our relationships with you and other stakeholders to promote the long-term viability of Falls Creek South as a unique and interconnected community in the heart of Vancouver. Thank you so much.
Thank you for calling in this evening, and I'm just checking to see if you have any questions, and I don't see any questions for you, sir, so appreciate you calling in tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks. And so I'm going to call for the, just see if there's anyone out there who would like to speak to this as well, 1-833-353-9183. Clerks, there's quite a buzz there. Maybe the moderator could shut the line down?
Oh, I'm not getting any noise coming from any of the lines.
It's the clerk here, Mayor Stewart. We're just adjusting here in the council chambers to see if it will make a difference.
Okay. So the number 1-833-353-9183, participant code 15315, to get on the list. I'm just going to check and see if there's anybody else on the line, and maybe check with the moderator.
There is no one on the line at the moment.
Okay, great. Clerks, anybody else in the chamber?
This is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and there is no one in the chamber.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to read the number out then again, 1-833-353-9183, participant code 15315 hashtag, and that's a second call for speakers. I'll call one more time, 1-833-353-9183, participant code 15315 hashtag, to get on the list before we close it. And the number, of course, is on the live stream, if you've missed it. And I guess I'll just check one more time with the moderator first. Is there anybody on the line?
There is no one else on the line.
And with the clerks.
There is no one here in the chamber.
Okay, thanks. So that's it for calls. So since there is no additional speakers, the speakers' list is now closed, and council, that is what we decided, that we would, since there's, we close the list, and there's no public comments, we'll close the receipt of public comments now as well, and move on. And I think that's it for this evening, and we'll be coming back.
Can we add a motion to adjourn?
I think we'll recess.
Recess?
I believe so. Click nothing else to do.
Did I make a motion to recess? Pardon the interruption, Mayor Stewart.
Go ahead.
The motion was that you would hear from speakers, and you would adjourn the meeting, and then you would go for questions to staff and debate and decision in the council meeting following the standing committee.
Great. We'll do that. And so we need a motion to adjourn, councillor Hardwick? That'd be good.
I would love to make that motion to adjourn.
Okay. A seconder. We have an eager seconder.
We're being seconded.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thanks, everybody. So that does it for today. We're back at it tomorrow morning at 9:30 in the standing committee meeting, and thanks again to the clerks and all who participated today.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. If I could just interrupt. It is important, I'd just like to remind council not to engage in any discussion regarding this last item, as you'll be still doing decision and debate tomorrow.
Right. Good. Thanks for that then. Okay, that's tonight. See you tomorrow.
why are we here, that the city has put forward in 2018. The context of Site F, it sits at a nodal point between the Berard Slope Commercial Downtown area, the future Senac Way development, and the Falls Creek Residential area. Residents of this neighborhood have over forty years of successful, safe, affordable living in a multi-use area. Marina Housing Co-op, where I moved to in nineteen eighty with my partner, is just next door. A new co-op at Site F will benefit from joining a family of successful housing partners with deep experience in Falls Creek, providing stable, affordable housing. This includes our long-term partnership with the city to plan, build, and promote Falls Creek as a historical, award-winning inner-city neighborhood. Next, the utilization of the vacant land, honoring the Falls Creek Development Plan, and especially addressing housing affordability. In 2017, the city general manager of planning said, and I quote, "Replan is a unique stakeholder in the city's makeup. It has representatives from all the strata and co-op housing enclaves, as well as those on freehold properties and buildings operated by nonprofit housing societies." End quote. I know you were also speaking yesterday about the aging-in-place intergenerational hub vision for the western edge of Falls Creek. Replan is also actively supporting member cooperatives to plan and finance redevelopment opportunities with all levels of government and other stakeholders. Increasing housing options is the most important reason we think the city should partner with a housing cooperative to develop Site F. A co-op offers unique but enduring investment through a values-based commitment to affordability, diversity, equity, security, and connection. Using a social return on investment approach, a co-op can demonstrate measurable outcomes that benefit residents, housing providers, and the local economy. It can offer a combination of diverse unit types, a hundred percent affordability, and long-term tenure and fiscal responsibility. It can address the right housing needs for existing and future Vancouver employees and their families, and for growing seniors' housing, housing pressures in Falls Creek and its adjoining neighborhoods. It will offer sound financial management and responsible self-governance that has a proven track record with tenants, yourselves, the landlord, and both public and private stakeholders. Finally, a housing co-op will integrate into the community, including the Waterfall Building, by drawing on a wealth of growing knowledge and expertise here dedicated to a revisioning process in designing and livability. Site F is especially important as a community-edged site, adjoining both neighborhood industrial supports for downtown, other area residences, and the soon-to-be-created Senac Way development. Its location adjacent to a multi-use transportation corridor also means the site could provide a community-defining entranceway. Several other housing co-ops already provide such significance, such as Creekview at the entrance to Granville Island, and the Falls Creek and Floating Homes co-ops adjacent to the parkland and seashores respectively. The official development plan, guiding planning principles created for Falls Creek South have greater resonance today than when they were drafted several years ago. These ten principles are essential guideposts as we gradually renew this vital part of Vancouver. A housing cooperative can do this responsibly, ethically, and healthily. We are prepared to deepen our relationships with you and other stakeholders to promote the long-term viability of Falls Creek South as a unique and interconnected community in the heart of Vancouver. Thank you so much.
Thank you for calling in this evening, and I'm just checking to see if you have any questions, and I, and I don't see any questions for you, sir, so appreciate you calling in tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, and so I'm going to call for the, just see if there's anyone out there would like to speak to this as well, one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three. Clerks, there's quite a buzz there, maybe the moderator could shut the line down?
Oh, I'm not getting any noise coming from any of the lines.
It's the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, we're just adjusting here in the council chambers to see if it will make a difference.
Okay, so the number one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three, code fifteen three one five, they get on the list. I'm just going to check, check and see if there's anybody else on the line, and maybe check with the moderator.
There is no one on the line at the moment.
Okay, great. Clerks, anybody else in the chamber?
This is the clerk here, Mayor Stewart, and there is no one in the chamber.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to read the number out then again, one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three, participant code one five three one five hashtag, and that's a second call for speakers. I'll call one more time, one eight three 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 five three nine one eight three, participant code one five three one five hashtag, to get on the list before we close it, and the number, of course, is on the live stream if you've missed it. Uh, and I guess I'll just check one more time with the moderator first, is there anybody on the line?
There is no one else on the line.
And with the clerks.
There is no one here in the chamber.
Okay, thanks. So that's, that's it for calls, so since there is no additional speakers, the speakers' list is now closed, and council, that is what we decided that we would, we would, since there's, we close the list, and if there are no public comments, we'll close the receipt of public comments now as well, and move on, and I think that's it for this evening, and we'll be coming back.
Can we add a motion to adjourn?
I think we'll recess.
Recession?
I believe so, clerk, nothing else to do?
Did I make a motion to recess? Recession?
Pardon, pardon the interruption, Mayor Stewart.
Go ahead.
Um, the motion was that you would hear from speakers, and you would adjourn the meeting, and then you would go for questions to staff and debate and decision in the council meeting following the standing committee.
Great, we'll do that. And so we need a motion to adjourn, councillor Hardwick, that'll be good?
I would love to make that motion to adjourn.
Okay, a seconder, we have an eager seconder?
Pretty young, second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say yay.
Yay.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, thanks, everybody. So that does it for today. We're back at it tomorrow morning at nine thirty in, in standing committee meeting, and thanks again to the clerks and all who participated today.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Stewart, if I could just interrupt, it is important, I'd just like to remind council not to engage in any discussion regarding this last item, as you'll be still doing decision and debate tomorrow.
Right, good. Thanks for that then. Okay, that's tonight. See you tomorrow.